To make sure, it seems like all of these lecterns, yeah, I'm seeing lots of yellow, yellow lights around folks. So I just want to make sure, checking with tech real quick. Nope, we're good. Okay, perfect. All right. So we have currently a few folks that have already signed up for the public hearing on the FY 2024 tax rate. And we also have people who have signed up for the FY 2024 budget. We also have a number of individuals who have signed up via Zoom. So with that, I will begin to call folks.
I'd like to make a point of order. I just wanted to tell everyone that's out there, like, I'll probably be up and down because the weather is up and down, but it's totally not personal to anybody's statements. Just wanted to let everybody know.
So with that, just to kind of help everyone, I will call your name if you've signed up and you could come on down to the lecture to provide your public comments. For my colleagues, if you are not speaking, please turn off your mic. Thank you very much. Just trying to make sure we're not getting so much feedback. Wonderful. And so I'll call your name. Please come on down. To provide testimony, you will receive three minutes. And so with that, we will start with the first person on our public hearing FY 2024 tax rate. I do just want to remind everyone that in the city of Tacoma Park, we are respectful and we are kind in terms of sharing any feedback. So with that, I will turn things over to the first person on the list, Jonathan Griffith. Come on down.
All right. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm here because I'm concerned that the tax rate debate is being framed by what used to be a Republican assumption that taxes are bad, that the goal of public officials is to reduce our tax burden. Well, I don't like paying bills any more than than anybody else, but I view taxes as my contribution to the collective well-being of our community so that we can remain a safe, sustainable, vibrant place. Now, I don't expect you to make any decisions based on my view of taxes, but based on facts. And I did want to highlight two facts, which I pulled from my review of the city's audited financial. The first fact is that the tax rate proposed by the city staff is actually lower than the tax rate was a decade ago. The second fact that I think we need to consider is that during that time Tacoma Park property owners have seen their property wealth increase by half a billion dollars. That's billion with a B. Now, in light of this dramatic increase in community wealth and based on my review of the reconciliation list, I'm concerned that we're in danger of a couple of things. One, we're in danger of not being smart, of giving up matching funds and doing so in a way that will make it harder to get such funds in the future. I'm concerned we're in danger of dismantling a sustainability program that has been a leader and an example among communities seeking to address climate change. This program has had, I think, a multiplier effect on cities around the country that follow our example. And I think now is the time to put our pedal down on this program, not to take it off. I think we're also in danger of eliminating economic development resources that bring in grants and funds to the city that support our vibrant multicultural business environment. And I'm worried about reducing resources for public safety at a time when it is increasingly under threat. So now I trust all of the smart, hardworking, and dedicated people we have up here and that we have in our city staff to appropriately manage the public FISC. But I urge you to do so in a way that doesn't seek to minimize my contribution to our collective well-being, but in a way that maximizes our ability to remain a smart, sustainable, vibrant, and safe community. And if that means that I pay the same tax rate I did a decade ago on the increase in my property value, on the increase in my wealth, then that's okay with me. I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tom Gagliardo. Sorry.
Mr. Gagliardo withdrew his request.
I reinstated it based on the, I told it'd pop up. Good try, Mayor Cersei. With all respect to my neighbor here, I'm as far from a Republican as you can get. And I said to this council that I'm not an anti-taxer, but I want value for the taxes I pay. Now, the tax rate is not a magic number. It's not preordained, and there's nothing sacred about any of the various numbers that have been thrown around. What dictates the tax rate is what the city spends its money on. So the question is, is it spending the money for the things we need? Is it getting, in the vernacular, the best bang for the buck? So if you've listened to some of us who've appeared here over the last several weeks, you know, we've questioned things like recreation buses being replaced when they only have 20,000 miles on them and they're not frequently used. So that's the discussion. The discussion I am not, I do not want to be in, I am not in, I will never be in the space of those who say government is bad, eliminate government, don't pay taxes. This is about wise spending. The council's heard me, ad nauseam on what I think is wise or unwise. And with two minutes to go, I'll quit right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ambrose Agassi.
Mayor Cersei, are we still on the tax rate?
We are still on the tax rate.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ambrose Agassi. I'm coming from Watsis on Kingwood Drive. I'm here tonight to invite and support city council to not vote or pass the city tax property increase. The question is very simple. What has the city recently done for those properties that you want increased the tax? Or what has the city done to improve resident life to pretend increase city property tax? I'm not talking about those funds that the city has given for COVID or whatever. Please, city council, do not vote or pass property, city property tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Rogers.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is John Rogers, and I live at 7425 Baltimore Avenue in Ward One. As always, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you on vital matters of the budget, city property taxes, and the goals and the directions of our city. In my prior comments to you, I have spoken about the burden of property taxes on city residents, particularly with respect to housing cost burden renters and those on fixed incomes. I've also spoken to you about reducing city expenditures, principally via responsibly deferring certain capital expenditures. And as regards responsibly deferring capital expenditures, I have focused on vehicle procurement, vehicle management, and vehicle disposition. Since I spoke to you last week, the city released the preliminary fiscal 2024 budget reconciliation worksheet. This worksheet indicates that the mayor and individual council members proposed a reduction in the tax rate and proposed reducing city expenditures via capital expense deferrals and with other reductions. I feel that with a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work by very many people, we have all come a very long way in a very short time. And I want to thank the mayor and council and staff for these first tentative steps to putting the city on a fiscally responsible and sustainable path. We recognize the significant challenges you all faced during this year's budget process, and we applaud you for starting to come to grips with the city's deficit spending problem. So to conclude, I want to urge the mayor and council to complete their budget journey by voting to lower the tax rate, by voting to responsibly defer certain capital expenditures, in part to allow for a procurement, management, and disposition process review, by voting to implement a hiring freeze, and by voting to allow more time for the community and for yourselves to consider the city manager's proposed annual budget. Thank you, and I really mean it. Thank you very, very, very much for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Paul Hubner, you're next up. Come on down. You got, okay, you got copies for us to sign? Excellent. Thank you so much.
I was just waiting for the mayor. I just, I mean, you know, at your, at your pleasure.
You distracted us with your, with your handouts.
Okay, Paul Hubner, Ward Three. First of all, I applaud the courage and integrity which you have brought to our city government. I am impressed by the sense of urgency and with focus, especially since you are working within an old broken model from past administrations. I have a few points in support of your proposed budget corrections and savings. One, almost every resident agrees with the mayor on a temporary hiring freeze and holding the current tax rate. Kudos on the recreation buses decision. The budget shows they were each used only 18 times or so all of last year. Regarding the trash truck, a ward public works $149,812 they requested for all other equipment. They can decide how to spend those funds and save up for next year. Five administrative departments, FY 23 budget, had five separate admin departments with spending totaling over $3 million for administration alone. Certainly, there must be some economies of scale. See the FY 23 budget pages 37 to 40. For example, use an independent payrolls company like ADP, Paychecks, or QuickBooks. Subcontract the speed camera division. This frees up two police officers to operations instead of administrative desk duty. Additionally, the city will make a percentage profit with no overhead. There should be a serious discussion of police dispatch. It still took nine minutes to get to the holdup on Woodland Avenue. Institute time on task, the chrono system that the city already has for all staff so that we have a better idea where to make cuts or increases for next year. Council members have asked repeatedly how much time it takes to do something, but there are no metrics. There also needs to be much more transparency and justification for outside consultants. The Direct Cash Assistance Program contractor, Live Stories, is a case in point. $200,000 for them to come to Tacoma Park, do a quick training, and then be on standby in case city staff have questions. Additional attention needs to be placed on metrics. The library, for instance, how many people actually use the temporary one or the old building? Is there ever a count kept? The council should do a deep study of equipment replacements, especially police vehicles. We need a more global perspective. The five-year plan for police vehicles tops $2.1 million. That's $423,000 per year for a department that already has 59 patrol vehicles for 42 line officers. And patrol vehicles should also be charged to the police budget as a line item. The department currently costs every man, woman, and child in Tacoma Park over $496 each for 67.68 FTEs in the last CAFER. We also need to see how often these vehicles and things like the roll-off trailer are used, and if a motor pool arrangement would suffice for a city of 2.4 square miles. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think this is, someone's pen was going out on him, unfortunately. Lynn Hardy.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor Cersei and councilpersons. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate all of your hard work on this. I know there's some very complex issues going on. I don't know them. I'm just a citizen in Tacoma Park, and I feel like a lot of people here have already made a lot of very good points. I would like to add that I think the tax rate increase that has been proposed has equity issues and is especially hard on fixed income residents, retired people, renters, lower-income families, and that the increased assessments will further multiply the financial burden. This on top of just the economic state in the country with increased inflation and the county executives wanting to increase county tax assessment. I think overall, it'll be a very large burden on the citizens of Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy Jacobs.
Ready?
I think we are.
Okay, good. I'm ready too. Troy Jacobs, Flower Avenue, Ward Five. I want to thank the city council and the city manager and staff for working on this budget. I am coming out in support of the city manager's recommended tax rate to ensure a balanced budget. This is the time to rebuild and strengthen support to the city's most vulnerable rather than dismantle Tacoma Park. More, not less, resources are needed to build a resilient, inclusive community. If the council does decide to decrease the rate from the city manager's suggested rate, I support additional measures, actually, that the city council can take to benchmark the rate decision to accountability measures, ensuring that the city council will address increasing the tax base. If resident concern is tax burden, local jurisdictions have more than one way to reduce the tax burden to individuals besides cutting the rate or dismantling Tacoma Park. What does this mean? This means increasing the number of homes for people rental and owned, affordable and luxury in the city as well as retail. And there are exciting things that are happening here, and I am encouraged by the more diversified feedback that has been elicited around the Mini Master Plan and Purple Line, highlighting novel and other more inclusive solutions. Tacoma Park does have some, does have racial problems, and there's certainly a lot more that we can do in terms of improving feedback for policy, planning, budget, and implementation. But this assumes that the city actually has resources and staff to do outreach and feedback beyond the people that can make it to city council meetings. Investments in interpreters, in daycare, in community connectors, outreach services, thinking of alternative ways of scheduling and having meetings, other means of communications besides these usual communication channels. If we want to have more time next year to vet the budget with residents, then we need to invest more resources to ensure diversified feedback, more representative of the whole city rather than the same old commentary. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Troy. So now I just want to open the floor in terms of any additional folks who didn't have an opportunity to sign up for the tax rate. Keep in mind, we are to, we're discussing the tax rate. Hello. Hello.
I'm Gina Gaspin, Ward Three. I'm coming here as a member of the Village of Tacoma Park, but in no way am I speaking for the village or nor am I representing the village. But for those of you who don't know, the Village, well, the Village movement is a nationwide grassroots movement of neighbors coming together to help seniors age in place in the community. Our Village of Tacoma Park, we have a mission, which is to provide intergenerational support to seniors and people with disabilities who wish to live independently in the community. We do things like offering rides to people, running errands, doing small home repairs, technology help, having monthly aging well programs of information that is useful, medical information, tax, cultural stuff. And a stronger memory program is something relatively new, which we have that, again, is something that will help seniors be, stay independent longer. Something the Village can't do is help seniors continue to afford living here. So the proposed budget with its increased property tax concerns me. We're mostly living on fixed incomes. Seniors in Tacoma Park have a higher poverty rate than any other age group in the city. Poverty rate of those 60 to 74 is 15%, and for those 75 plus, it's closer to 20%. For black seniors, it's even higher. These figures are taken from demographic information on the city's website. The Village can support, can provide a lot of support, but can provide the income needed to be able to continue living here. If property taxes continue to rise, we're in danger of not being able to fulfill our mission of helping seniors age in the, in the community. I don't think anyone wants a city where only young professionals can afford to live. I've heard a number of informed, thoughtful suggestions over the past few weeks of ways the city could substantially reduce its expenditures such that property tax bills would not be raised. I urge you to make these reductions so we can continue to live in the diverse city we all say we want. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on the tax rate? Come on down.
Evening. My name is Stephen Bowden. I live in Ward Three, and I am a homeowner with my wife. I would encourage the council to adopt the proposed property tax increase. So I did some math. Based off my calculations, the average home value in Tacoma Park, about $650,000, would result in a $200 tax increase. Now, let's face it, if you can afford a $650,000 home, you're already pretty wealthy. In addition to the fact that there's a pretty good chance you're effectively getting a tax break from the government by virtue of being a homeowner, I would therefore ask the city council to consider, what do they really want their legacy to be? Do they want to invest in the community, help address our city's budget problem? Or do they effectively want to save people who are already pretty wealthy in the grand scheme of things, a couple hundred bucks a year? Now, I know that the city does have a budget shortfall. I would suggest that it work to address the budget shortfall. I would suggest that it work to address the budget shortfall in the long term by working with its county partners to increase the availability of multifamily housing as well as decreasing the amount of historically preserved land in Tacoma Park in order to grow the population and therefore the city's tax base. I believe that by growing the city's tax base, by promoting growth within Tacoma Park, we can help address our budget shortfalls. In short, I would encourage the city council to adopt immediately a progressive vision for Tacoma Park that entails investing in the community by supporting the proposed tax increase as well as promoting affordability and equality within the city by promoting growth and increasing the amount of housing that exists in the city and addressing the city's budget shortfall in the process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments tonight in the room on the tax rate?
Karen Elitch, Ward Five. To my previous speaker. When I bought my house, it was under $200,000. I built most of it. And, um, I can't afford to live in it by myself. My family lives there with me, my daughter and her kids, my, and their husband. And there are plenty of seniors who are not rich with $600,000 home but are poor because they have a $600,000 home. And I think as, as we struggle with how to deal with that, I think we need to make sure that we're not all able to afford $600,000 and $200,000, you know, homes. So just keep that in mind. And we will see people having to leave if they continue raising their taxes like this. And even with the stuff that's given to you, uh, there are some times you can get a few dollars here and a few dollars there. It's still remains unaffordable. Um, I didn't make my house, I mean, if I sell my house, I'll be a rich person. I'm not now. Cause I have to pay the taxes that we have and the mortgage that I still have. And I think I'm not the only person out there like that. So as we look at that, we need to figure out how we can make that happen. And if you all want to pay the taxes and let us not, we'll find a way to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments in the room around the 2024 tax rate? Come on around.
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. As page thirty-four of the budget shows, the city manager has proposed a property tax increase of 10.68%. It is unsustainable to increase property taxes faster than the growth in people's ability to pay them. Providentially, the city itself has a measure of that growth. The rent stabilization cap currently 7.3%. I urge the council to adopt the tax increase no greater than 7.3%, no greater than 55.62 cents. Think of it as tax stabilization. I hope the council, I hope the council will maintain the proposed 57.05% rate on vacant and commercial property. Doing so will begin shifting the tax burden from individuals to businesses. It will also recover some of the revenue lost when the city ended its inventory tax. The railroad and utility tax has been $1.57 for the past decade. I failed to find the proposed rate in the budget. Given the proposed residential property tax increase, I hope the city will raise the utility tax rate increase as well. An increase to $1.66 would be comparable to that of the property of the increase for residential property. I'll note that increasing the rate to $10 would generate a million dollars of revenue for the city, balancing the budget on the backs of monopolies that can afford it rather than residents who can't. I hope, I hope the council will consider reinstating the inventory tax. Given the city's financial woes, a tax that's badly administered by the state of Maryland is better than no tax at all. And I note that a Maryland state webpage still shows the property at the side of the abandoned hospital. I am not a lawyer, tax or otherwise. But if exemption is based on use rather than ownership, and if exemption changes are independent of the three-year assessment cycle, it may be worthwhile to see if the exemption can be lifted now. With the property's assessed value of $50 million, over $50 million, a complete lift would result in more than a quarter of a million dollars of annual tax revenue for the city. It would result in even more revenue for Montgomery County. County folks may be willing to help the city in investigating the possibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on the tax rate? Look.
Hello. Good evening. Kelly Skelton, Ward Six. I just wanted to echo the comments of, uh, my neighbor in a different ward. But I feel very akin to, uh, Troy regarding the tax rate and the progressive nature of Tacoma Park and the vision that we have for the city, but also those of Arthur, uh, who's looking at more inventive solutions in terms of the utility tax, in terms of, uh, uh, stabilization of the tax rate, uh, which maybe couldn't be applied to all residents, but potentially those who are seniors and trying to age in place. I think we do need to see, um, as California has done, a way of decreasing the tax burden on existing residents while accepting that there is change in Tacoma Park in terms of the demographics of the people that live here and their ability to pay those taxes and allow people who are purchasing new homes at $650,000 to share that burden, whereas people who are aging in place in $650,000 homes to share a smaller portion of that burden. Not no burden, but a smaller portion of it. So I like the stabilization, although I'd have to say that the effects of rent stabilization, uh, or rent control on this city have been to discourage the type of building and the type of increase in the, uh, the number of residents that would help develop our retail, help develop our, uh, tax base further. And that we all in this room need to accept that change is necessary in order to remove the burden from individual taxpayers, uh, in the, uh, housing taxpayers. So it's very important that while we accept that paying taxes is important, that we also accept that change is a part of living, of, of continuing the tradition of Tacoma Park and continuing its progressive nature and addressing the massive housing shortage that we do have in Tacoma Park. Uh, so while I do 100% support the city manager's proposed tax rate, I would like at some point for the council to examine changes that can be made to the system to allow our residents to, uh, our long-term residents to share less of this burden and allow them to age in place as important community members. And I would have to say that in my last remaining 30 seconds, I was a little bit saddened to see the amount of items out of the reconciliation that came from the Ward Six council member and also the tenor regarding city staff. I find our city staff very important. When I need a pothole fixed, when I need a tree looked at, when I need my trash picked up, when I need the police, the people that come are Tacoma Park, Tacoma Park civil servants and not Montgomery County civil servants. And I think we need to treat the people that work here with the utmost respect and appreciation for the service that they do as well as the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other public comments in the room on the 2024 tax rate? Mr. Charles. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor. Cit- Citizen of Tacoma Park, my name is Charles Raju Charles. I live in Ward Six. Thank you, Mayor, for your strong leadership. I support affordable, fair tax. It is true, I stay in Ward Six. My income, the monthly income is less than $2,000. I mean, I bought my house, it was $3,000, $300,000. Can I afford to pay just because the property value, I had to sell that house. You want me to move out of this place? That is indirectly, you are giving a message, poor people should vacate Tacoma Park. We are not going to go anywhere. We are going to stay there. It is our right. So please, don't treat me like a Trump or George Bush. I am Raju Charles. I'm a poor man from Ward Six. I speak for everybody. We also have a right to live in Tacoma Park. Don't try to kick us out of this place. Thank you very much. I'm proud of our mayor. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other public comments on the 2024 tax rate?
Hello. Good evening, Council. My name is Natalie Hopkins, and I live in Ward One. And, um, I have not reviewed the budget thoroughly, but I just want to comment that in general, um, based on the economy of the United States and the state of Maryland and Montgomery County, it's not a good time to raise taxes. Maryland is losing jobs compared to Virginia. I mean, we have a lot of economic headwinds against us now. And, um, Tacoma Park is one of the highly, most highly taxed areas in all of Maryland. And we are just going to be compounding our problem if we don't control our spending. I mean, I, um, I very much appreciate all the progressive ideas that everyone has, but I think we've had a history of not addressing the budget and budget creep when it comes to the government function here. And, um, this is a good time for us to, uh, thoroughly assess our situation and address our problems. And I'm concerned generally about Montgomery County and Maryland in general, in addition to Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments on the 2024 tax rate? Go on once, go on twice. All right, we're gonna move on to our, our virtual participants. Do we have any of them? We should, we should have, um, Jim Dela. Excellent. So Jim, I think you're up next, if you're there. Perfect.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I don't see the timer on, but I will start. Uh, thank you.
Okay, we just started you.
Yep. You know, I think we, we, uh, to, to, to try and restrict my comments to the tax rate. You know, the, the, the taxes, you know, the, the consultant's presentation we had a few weeks ago really shows that, you know, when we cut tax, we have a budget problem because we cut tax a, a few years ago. And if we don't raise it, uh, we will continue to have a problem. The tax, uh, the taxes we raise, uh, uh, allow us to provide the services, uh, that make Tacoma Park special. They express, uh, uh, our values and these services. And, you know, we have the ability, uh, to, to do things that Montgomery County doesn't. You know, we believe, uh, in, uh, in fair wages for our, our Tacoma Park civil servants. Neighbors have, have echoed that. Uh, they provide a great service. That costs, costs money. You know, we can't, uh, uh, I, I want to express our values, uh, uh, about, uh, sustainability. We want to express our values about fairness, uh, between the wards and between the generations. You know, the, the tax rate gives us the ability to do that and to, to define what it is to, to be, uh, in Tacoma Park. If we want to keep ourselves safe, uh, and to keep our, um, uh, our, our, our communities, is well-serviced by a, 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 a police department we can be proud of, that requires money. And I know that I'm, I'm supposed to be, uh, um, uh, talking about the tax rate, but I'm traveling and I only have one opportunity to, to get in tonight. But the one, uh, budget item that really concerns me, they're sort of suggesting that we can sort of cut police and cut senior police. You know, that, uh, uh, this idea that, uh, um, uh, we, leadership, uh, police lead themselves. You know, if we want a good quality police service, that's, that is, uh, uh, delivering not only a good service to us, but something we can be proud of, then that requires good leadership and that requires senior people. I think some of the cuts, we're getting to the point, uh, of really sort of, uh, hurting ourselves, you know, uh, suggesting that we're gonna cut, uh, 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 cybersecurity and putting that out in public. I, I mean, i- is, 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 it, the mind boggles that we're telling the world that we're not putting, investing in cybersecurity. We're not being resilient. We need to keep pay tax, we need to raise the interest, uh, the tax rate as suggested to make sure that we have the right contingencies, we're able to pay our debt, and Tacoma Park doesn't go into bankruptcy, but is a still able to express and, uh, through the, the, the work that you do, uh, what makes us special, what makes us inclusive and fair and resilient. And so I think we need to, uh, uh, in- increase the tax rate and recognize it's a difficult decision, but one that must be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next commenter, Mary Rooker.
Yes, hi, I'm Mary Rooker, Ward Two. I'm concerned about the property tax hikes and proposed cuts to several sustainability line items. You know, I get it that if I want no property tax increase or a smaller one, that I must be willing to reduce the budget. We may need to shift to county police, perhaps keeping the police departments trained crisis managers. I've also been long concerned that our city manager's salary is too high and would seek savings there. The last two city managers were paid more than the county executive and more than comparable city managers in the area. If you have any control over the city's formula, I urge making at least the city's portion progressive instead of the regressive current flat tax rate the state uses. I finally paid off my mortgage, but my property taxes are now as high as my mortgage was. Like Ms. Elrich, my property values have increased dramatically in my 20-plus years here, but I do not get any additional money from that unless I sell my home and leave, and I'm hoping never to have to move. I am undecided on whether to keep the sustainability manager. We need the strongest possible sustainability actions, which favors keeping the post. Yet I suspect that the county may have better scale and resources that we cannot match. Please keep the various bike projects and more car-free opportunities. I also support fu- funding the Tree Tacoma and Urban Forest programs and would like to see further improvements. We need education on the Safe Grow Ordinance. Just last week, The Washington Post carried yet another article on how we could transform our lawns into pollinator habitat, eliminating toxic lawn chemicals and most machinery. The Post article described lawns as, quote, "A soul-crushing time suck that most of us would be better off without," unquote. And I agree. Such yard transformations are among the many drastic lifestyle changes that scientists called for yet again in March with their final warning to humanity. These yard changes would also help with the many water problems in my own yard and throughout the city. All leaf blowers are unsustainable, so we ought to consider banning all of them, not just the gas-powered ones. These yard and stormwater management solutions would also address the climate emergency. The greatly reduced yard machine noise pollution would further improve the quality of life. I currently suffer from about 20 hours a week of lawn machine noise and air pollution from March to December. Finally, I recommend extending the budget discussion time. Ours is five weeks, while Gaithersburg's is five months. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on the tax rate? So the next item. Oh, one more? Okay. We were so close. No, but welcome, Elizabeth. Am I really welcome? I don't know.
No, the, um, thank you. Uh, I just was moved to speak because of what Ms. Elrich said and what the gentleman up, up in the corner said, um, yes, my home has, uh, increased in value. And yes, I can't take advantage of it. Um, I live on social security. And for the past almost 10 years, I rented out rooms to strangers in my home via Airbnb in order to make ends meet. And it's th- this isn't sheesh Airbnb, okay? This is people who, who are here on internships and who couldn't afford to come and do their internships in DC. At, at embassies or, um, the, uh, the Venice Hospital or NOAA or lots of various places. They couldn't afford to do it if, if you didn't have a, a place where they could spend as little as I charged. So it's basically an owner-occupied group home is what it is. And with license and everything. So, um, but when COVID came, I, I couldn't, I had, everybody had to go. So I lost all my income immediately. And I haven't really had the the guts to open it up again, honestly. And so, um, we, we aren't, we aren't living high on the hog. Okay. So I just want everybody to remember that. And I also think that the idea that was proposed about uh, having, uh, it's like some kind of a senior discount would be good because the state does it. The county does it. You have to apply for it, but the problem is I don't even qualify because, um, uh, they're, well, they have to look at the, the value of the assets. I, I can't use my assets that I've saved because I have a medical condition that I might need those assets in case the medical condition kicks in big time. So, um, assets are one thing and there's, it's also just saving for the scary medical day. So anyway, I didn't prepare those thing, those comments, so I apologize for not being succinct. But, um, everybody has a unique, difficult situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments on the tax rate? Okay, we're gonna move on to the public hearing on the budget. So first, Tom still here? All right, come on down.
Wishing won't make me go away. Uh, Tom Gagliardo, Ward One. This discussion is about spending. It's not about the progressive nature of Tacoma Park. Nobody has attacked that or assaulted that. Nobody is talking about radically changing what the city has done in terms of programs. Yes, there's somebody, one of the council members has proposed to change to the sustainability budget. That's an in-depth discussion. I don't have a position on that. I want to hear more about it. This is a discussion, as the council knows from the comments that I and others have made over the last several weeks, is about spending. If you're so gung ho to pay the tax rate of fifty-seven, uh, point oh five cents, then you're willing to pay for two buses in the total sum of $260,000 that are used 18 times a year and have 20,000 mi- miles on those vehicles. You're willing to pay 300 and some thousand dollars for a trash truck that was not even in the planned, uh, uh, replacement, uh, schedule. That's, that's what this discussion is about. What are we spending money for? Are we getting the best bang for our bucks? It's not about being a Republican or a Democrat or a progressive or a conservative. It's about what are we spending money for and are we getting the most bang for our bucks? And I will join those previous speakers who congratulated the council for taking, for grabbing this bull by the horns and starting the discussion on what are we spending money for and are we getting enough? Are we getting the best bang for our bucks? Thank you. Really and truly, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Len Hardy. No worries. Do we have any other people in the room who have any comments around the 2024 budget?
Good evening, Jaclyn Moore, Ward Two. So I want to piggyback on what Mr. Gagliardo was saying. Um, but first I want to reiterate what other folks have already said about starting the budget process earlier. Really need to have that extra time to wrap our heads around it, not just your heads, but the residents' heads. So I wanted to talk a little bit about contract oversight. Um, I'm hoping that for any future contracts that the city engages in, that there'll be some sort of clawback provision at $200,000 for the Live Stories Forward contract for, to help with the direct cash assistance dispersment of the ARPA funds. Just seems like a bit of a joke to me. Um, you know, we still don't really have all the details. But if you look at our local MCPS schools, every single child who goes to school in Montgomery County, whether it be in the city or elsewhere in the county, the counselors and the teachers have something called a baseball, baseball card. And that baseball card gives the child's name. It gives all the stats, their, uh, reading levels, their math levels. Most importantly, whether or not they receive FARM's benefits. And these counselors at the schools are masters at discretion and confidentiality. And they could have been tapped to help you all find the people in need. Now, because they're dealing with students, it wouldn't have necessarily helped you find the elderly members of the community in need, but it would have helped you find the families with kids. Because if you receive FARM's benefits, free and reduced meal subsidies, you're in that ballpark. So what I did is just for future reference, I composed a list. And Google's a miraculous thing, so easy. And I have a list of the counselors at all of our local schools for you. So if there's still a chance to spend that ARPA money as it was intended and not on capital improvement projects and not on staff salaries, these are the people you contact. So I have a copy for the city clerk. I have a copy for Mr. Bolduc and I have a copy for the mayor. And I'm sure that Ms. Carpenter probably won't mind making copies for every council member should you decide to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, do we have any other public comments about the 2024 budget? Come on down. I like to make it feel very game showish because then that way you're excited.
This is right. Uh, my name's Brendan Smith. I'm a Ward Three city resident. I'm the City's Arts Humanities Coordinator and I'm the President of the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees Local 3399, which represents most city Tacoma Park employees. I want to recognize International Workers' Day and May Day today in solidarity with workers and unions across the world. Anyway, there we go. Uh, I also want to share some concerns about some of the potential budget cuts that could have devastating effects both for city employees and the efficient operations of all city services. I only got a copy of the reconciliation list this morning that I guess you guys are potentially voting on this evening. And, uh, we also had a bargaining session today where the city's own labor attorney said he hasn't even seen them. So, um, I guess our primary or one of our main concerns is, uh, we're dismayed that a hiring freeze would even be considered now. Given that the city council saw the damaging impacts of the hiring freeze that was imposed by the former city manager and then voted to lift that freeze on January 18th. Um, so it's inconceivable we'd be going down that or considering going down that same road now. Over previous years, the cities routinely left vacant jobs unfilled as a backdoor way to save city funds off the backs of city employees without increasing pay, approving deserved promotions, or providing additional overtime. Those conscious decisions have undermined morale, impeded the delivery of city services, increased turnover, and repeatedly violated our union contract. Felt like we were making progress, um, and the council understood those issues when you voted to lift the prior hiring freeze. So we can't make the same mistake twice and enact another hiring freeze now. City's already having trouble fill- filling vacant positions because of the chronically low wages paid to city employees that are up to 30% below the market rate, according to the city's unemployment study. I don't think most city residents know that the current city budget only includes a 2% wage increase for city employees because no one on the council has discussed it at a public meeting or offered any justification for that rate. Nationwide salaries have increased 5% over the past year along with the inflation rate. And Montgomery County will be approving a 6% increase for their employees. Another proposal to cut the staffing and half in the Code Enforcement Division would undermine the ability to enforce city codes. One of the three positions in that division has already been cut. So there's no way a second position could be cut unless the city wants to stop enforcing the codes, which the council itself has enacted. We're finally, the, we're, we're only at the beginning of contract negotiations now, even though we're more or less near the end of, um, the budget discussions. And our union is trying to foster a more collaborative relationship with both city management and the city council to treat the union and city workers as equal stakeholders in the operations of the city instead of as an afterthought. Uh, there'd be no city government without city workers and we, excuse me, we can't have a productive dialogue when all we hear from the council is silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on the 2024 budget?
Thank you, Kelly Skelton, Ward Six. Just one comment regarding the, uh, cuts to the enhancements of the data center, security, and firewall. I think if you're gonna cut there, you need to review your insurance coverage for cybersecurity attacks, um, which are rampant right now. I've been, I'm professionally, I work in accounting and audit risk reduction or enterprise risk reduction and audit. And see numerous clients experiencing breaches, ransomware attacks, and other types of fraud related to, uh, lapses in their cybersecurity. It's a very hot, hot topic, especially since 2020. Um, it happens very easily, even to clients that have good, um, internal, uh, uh, controls. And so honestly, I think in terms of you're looking at our budget and a, you know, risk reduction viewpoint, we should spend money in places that will save us money in other times. If you do have a breach, if you do have an attack, it will cost you in time of your staff so much more than you will save in not doing the impro- improvements now. And that goes along with some other things. Of course, I mean, as our city resident, when we're seeing that we're not going to be matching the metro branch, we may not match the metro, uh, trail match, uh, when we might not do bike infrastructure improvements. Those things are quality of life issues for your residents that I don't personally support. But in terms of making smart business decisions, I would spend more money versus less on your cybersecurity. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on the 2024 budget? Okay, I've just did one, 1,002, 1,003, 1,000. Okay. So now we're going to move on to the online. We have people that have joined via Zoom. Kaylee De La Puente, you have the floor.
I was not unmuted. I apologize if I could have my half a second there back. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Kaylee De La Puente, Executive Director of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. I want to briefly speak tonight about certain items in the FY24 reconciliation budget that negatively impact the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Commercial District. Before I begin, let me remind you that the City of Tacoma Park mandates in city code a license fee on all businesses and property owners in the crossroads. They pay their fair share and would like to see the city also demonstrating their commitment to the Crossroads Commercial District. Some of the proposed cuts in the reconciliation budget that I found concerning. Uh, one, cutting the Economic Development Specialist position. Appropriate staffing for economic development is critically important if the city wants to be an active strategic player in the economic development of the city and not just reactive or disappointed with what shows up. When I first began, uh, in the City of Tacoma Park at the Tacoma Langley Crossroads, there was no specific staff person for economic development. It was just assumed that the director of DHCD would just also do that when they can. With all the city set staff changes, uh, at the DHCD has been very hard hit. We now have the economic, the director of DHCD serving as the interim, uh, city administrator. The Economic Development Manager is now serving as interim DHCD Director, to my knowledge. If we cut the Economic Specialist position and put a six-month hold on hiring out vacant positions, we're really moving backwards to a time when we just assume the DHCD coordinator will do economic development when they get to it. Um, next, the Neighborhood Commercial Center Program rebate. I believe this refers to the city's Business Improvement Grant. Again, both of these are important carrots and incentives that help the city lead and guide the economic development rather than just react and suffer from external impacts. Public Service Management Plan, one of the biggest needs and priorities of the Crossroads Commercial District is producing public spaces. The Public Space Management Plan was an important step in creating a strategic framework for this. And this planning helps with securing external funds for public space in the crossroads. New Hampshire Ave City Matching Fund. My understanding is that this line item is for the New Hampshire Ave Bike Way. Multimodal transportation opportunities are very important for the crossroads. It's important for the city to be able to leverage connectivity opportunities for the future Purple Line. And lastly, I just want to note the importance of, uh, code enforcement and the tree program, because I think this has been focused on a residential perspective. But it's also critically important to keeping our commercial properties and neighborhoods beautiful, maintained, safe, and healthy. And I'll leave it at that. My door is open for any future questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next up, David Blockstein.
Yes, good evening and thank you for your time, uh, Mayor and Council. I'm David Blockstein from Ward Three. I'm also representing the Tacoma Park Mobilization Environment Committee. I have and we have, uh, a lot of concerns about the proposed cuts, which respectfully, we think many of them are penny wise and pound foolish. Others have talked about the, uh, proposed cut in, in cybersecurity as, as an example of that. Uh, one way that we grow the services for the city and improve our economic condition is to use money from other sources. And frankly, there is a lot of money available now, especially in sustainability and equity areas from federal, state, and, and county government. And so it makes no sense to be cutting our small match less than 20% for things like biking, which improves people's health and reduces emissions, again, reducing people or improving people's health. We need to be, um, supporting tree planting and the urban forestry program. Again, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, decreasing asthma, reducing the urban heat island effect, and again, increasing people's health. Sustainability is, is another example where it's not just ecology. It's the envi- environment, social equity, and health. Having a city sustainability manager, somebody who every day their focus is sustainability, just like with the economic development position. This is why we've been so successful, as highlighted in the city newsletter of March, introducing our greenhouse gas emissions by 27% since 2005. But there's a lot more work to be done. And the great news is that there's a lot of money on the table and we need to be there at the table. We need to have a sustainability coordinator. There's a real, real cost if for the, we would stop again the hiring process a second time and put a freeze on that position and not be in a position to get access to the county money and to the state money and to the federal money. So we need to be thinking long-term. We need to be thinking big picture. We need to be thinking strategically and sustainability is at the core of that. Sustainability will save money for the city residents. It will improve our health. And we need a sustainability coordinator, a sustainability position with a budget to be working with those other entities to help all of us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Now, up next, Mary Roker.
Um, I, I was told to combine my two sets of comments into one and I already spoke earlier, so I'll, uh, let the next person come online.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. I'm so sorry. Your name was here twice. Um, Joel Rosenberg.
Yeah, trying to get my video on. How's it going? Uh, thank you for the time. I'm Joel Rosenberg. Uh, I live in Ward One.
How's it going? Uh, thank you for the time. I'm Joel Rosenberg. Uh, I live in Ward one. Uh, I've been listening to all the comments and um, I agree that we want to spend the money where there's the best bang for the buck. Um, uh, I, I just want to follow up on what David Blockstein was saying. That cutting the sustainability department right now is, I think, a terrible mistake. Uh, and the reason is that there's tons of money that's becoming available from the Federal Inflation Reduction Act. As well as Montgomery County and their electrify everything goals. Um, in my day job, I work on trying to help people electrify their homes. And to get off of fossil fuels, which aligns with the Tacoma Park Climate Emergency Response Framework Resolution. There's, there's a bit of lack of understanding, like people who uh make the least amount of money. So the seniors who were speaking earlier. Are eligible for the biggest benefits from the Inflation Reduction Act, up to $8,000 for a heat pump. Uh, for money of double for re-wiring their house, for insulating their house, et cetera. Um, but the benefits that they can, that they'll be eligible for when that program rolls out later this year or early next year are not well understood. And uh, somebody like sustainability manager help with educating the, the most uh eligible people, the people who make the least amount of money who stand to benefit the most. Uh, from that program. Everybody else can get tax credits starting now for electrifying their house. And so again, it's an education thing. But in addition to that, there's greenhouse gas reduction fund money that's coming. There's lots of other grants coming. Uh, the time for trying to fix the climate uh problem is now and these, this coming decade, and in particular this year, getting ready for. For, for taking advantage of all this money over the coming decade that the Inflation Reduction Act is available. This is a critical year. And so the hiring freeze and not filling that position uh and delaying six months to a year is going to hurt. Uh, the best bang for the buck argument of. Let's help the entire community understand what the benefits are that are available to them. Work on getting fossil fuels out, getting their homes more efficient and powered by renewable electricity. And uh, fix the climate change while saving money at the same time. So I will, I'll end my pitch. Um, you can check out my organization's website rewiringamerica.org. There's like a little um. Uh, calculator where you can enter some personal information and it will tell you what you are eligible for, for your benefits. But I'm not here to advertise that. I'm just fighting for the position of sustainability manager to try and educate the community. And uh, and to take advantage of all the benefits that are coming. And it's, I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate penny wise, pound foolish to cut that particular position at this moment in time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next up, Julie Tadio.
Yes. Hi, thank you, mayor uh and council. Uh, so I'm Julie Tadio, Ward two, and I'm pretty much outgoing the last few comments. Regarding the proposed cuts for sustainability coordinator, the tree planting and climate programs and code enforcement. Uh, so I just want to remind everyone that Tacoma Park has been the leader on so many of these issues where the county. And even the state then followed us regarding restrictions on lawn pesticides. Our polystyrene ban, plastic bags, plastic straws. And I've heard some people say, well, we'll just let the county deal with these issues. Um, I know for a fact that the person who is responsible for the county enforcement and education, for instance, for lawn pesticides. Has no budget. So she's basically trying to perform miracles with no money. So why we would cut that little bit of money. Uh, that's allocated for these essential issues and rely on the county when they have, you know, we're talking over a million residents. We won't have the money from the county for these things. So please keep that in mind. Um. That was the lead advocate for the Safe Grow law, which has now been in effect for almost a decade. Um, I have to say, I have been disheartened. By the previous and now the current administration in terms of um, you know, failure to promote it in the way that it should be. We set. Uh, a precedent. Uh, the county followed, other counties in the country followed our lead. To protect our waterways, our air, our pollinators, our kids from harmful lawn pesticides. There's a reason the pesticide industry is still going after this law. Um, so we need code enforcers and Rick Baravetti is fantastic what he does. But there has to be more than two people in terms of, because code enforcement is not just giving tickets. It includes these education mandates. And every year it's left up to me to contact the city to get those gorgeous bus shelter posters put up. Uh, it's now May and those bus shelters still don't have our Safe Grow posters. And new residents are not so well versed in this law and landscapers are violating the law. So education is incredibly important and money should be allocated for that. Not just for lawn pesticides, but all these other initiatives. Lastly, I tuned in for the youth council last week and the questions that took up quite a bit of time for those who were on the forum. Were regarding the environment, environmental protection and how Tacoma Park was going to be a leader in this. And so I, it's good that, you know, all these future voters get more than just words, but they actually see that we're committed. To these programs and to these laws and to their enforcement and that there was money for it. Um, otherwise, you know, those words are just meaningless. So we keep telling young people that we care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments online? I don't think we have any other comments on Zoom. Okay, that concludes our public hearing on the tax rate as well as the proposed FY. City clerk, keep me in order. Did I forget someone?
You're fine. We just want to um announce when the tax um tax rate will be adopted.
Thank you very much. So the council will be voting on the tax rate. The first reading will be on May the 10th. And the second reading will be on May the 17th. Right, great. Well, thank you so much. And so we are going to move forward and um begin um our discussion on budget reconciliation. Um, so I want to um. Lay a few ground rules for the discussion in order to ensure that we're able to make uh some headway. Um, in terms of. Oh yeah, you, are you hearing the feedback as well?
I think the first time I hit it. Yeah, we did, we did it when we hit our light.
Okay. Um, so I'm sorry, we're dealing with a couple of tech issues. Um, so what I want to make sure that we're able to do is to um. Work through the reconciliation list and in a way that is um. Uh, clear and kind of groups things together in a way um that will help to foster discussion and decision making. For members on the council, um, we will not be voting tonight on the items on the reconciliation list. However, what we are doing is going through the reconciliation list. With an idea because I recognize that there were a couple of places where there might have been a couple of errors. Or there may be additional questions that people may have. And I want to make sure that the list that we um vote on on Wednesday. Is clear and concise and as accurate as possible to facilitate a more speedy voting session. So with that, first, I am, I want to open the floor. For members on the council who have identified errors on the reconciliation list. And would like to have an item that they suggested removed. Okay, um, so I'm going to start with uh council member Siemens, you're up first.
Thank you, mayor. And uh, uh, I would like to just take a second to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's uh great to see the community involved at this level and to share your opinions with us. Uh, and anyways, on the reconciliation list, there are a couple of things I put in uh, and in fact, some of the comments tonight uh mentioned them. The first I would like to um, to say on the uh. Neighborhood services uh requests that I made uh for reducing um the budget to. Uh, reduce one position in the neighborhood services. Uh, I had the opportunity to talk with uh, Ms. Hansak who uh. Uh, shared uh putting this forward. And after talking with her and the uh, city staff to get a better understanding. I, I think the um, the key thing and Brendan Smith mentioned it tonight with the union that the uh. The key reduction that we really want to see is in the policy that the council set uh years ago. And um. And it seems more appropriate to discuss the policy before discussing getting rid of the people who are. There to uh implement the policy. So with that and with council member Hansak's uh agreement, I would like to withdraw that from the budget discussion. But I would like to add a contingency on that. And I would like a commitment from the mayor that we can add that discussion of the uh neighborhood services policy to a upcoming agenda after. A reasonable amount of time after we finish the budget discussion.
You have that commitment, Mr. Siemens?
Thank you and Ms. Hansak.
Thank you, mayor.
So can you confirm the amount? I was just, I just want to make sure that we're clear on which line items um that are currently on the reconciliation list. Um, that you would like to um propose um removing. So.
I, I, I'm getting terrible.
Okay, let's, if everyone, I apologize, but if everyone can um on, yep, just wave. Go ahead.
Here we go. Okay, um, so we would like to remove the line item that says, I'm sorry, thank you. Now I have the list. Uh, 50% code enforcement services line, that's line 49. And uh, line 50, wait, hold on, I'm sorry, hold on. It, it, it looks different than when I saw it. Wasn't there a car?
Yeah.
Okay, is that, that's down at the bottom. I'm sorry. So and line 50. Yeah, it looks like those are duplicate anyway. And then is there a car? I think that if you could help me find that somewhere, oh, I think it's line 57. Whoop, was that line 57? Sorry, I'm not able to scroll myself, so I think, I think if you go up.
The code enforcement purchase to lease vehicles is line 74.
Well, that may be a, that, that was proposed by council member Small, right? I can't, I'm sorry, I can't see because of the. That's. But that's yours. Yeah, no, that's, so that's not mine. Uh, there, there was something associated. I'm sorry, this list looks slightly different than when I seen it last. Uh, if you could go up, please. There was a car, a vehicle purchase line and if it's been removed, that's fine.
Yes, so the 77, I believe, I'm sorry, we're having a hard time seeing the full list because of the um, closed captioning. Okay, perfect. So it should be 78? I'm sorry, no, it's, yep, it should be 77.
Line 77.
Yep.
Uh, council member Siemens, did you have other things to remove because I?
Councilmember Hansak, since you have your light on, could uh, maybe you could bring up the other one we discussed.
The, about the bus? Okay. Um, we, council member Siemens and I have also had a chance to discuss um the recreational buses and we were able to discuss that with. Um, the director of recreation and also um Debbie and uh, and, and. It was a really, I, I want to share with the community that it was a really in-depth discussion, which I welcomed because this is how we do real collaboration, in my opinion. And we really pushed a lot of different ideas and we shared the explicit challenges that have been faced. Uh, council member Siemens was able to share the vision from many years ago of what, what it was assumed that these recreational buses were going to do. That the license that was the money that was given for the licensing and what all the constraints were. And I, I think we'd be happy to put more details in writing for the community if you'd like to hear the richness of our conversation around that. But I want, I want to tell you that, that um our collective agreed conclusion with staff and, and, and both of us. Was that the most sensible thing to do at this point in time, we feel based on lots of different factors. Is to go ahead and um remove the um, sorry, to go ahead and, and de. Uh, okay, hold on, I've got to look at my list because it's all. Uh. Give me one second. I have it written clearly, so I don't misspeak here. Pardon me. Um, is, to, is um, we want to take away our um. Our, our, our recreational large bus li- line. Um, and we want to go ahead and, and replace the large bus with a small bus that has a. I, I don't know that that's necessarily the way the budget process works, but we'd like to see that one um be replaced with a small bus with a lift on it. Um, and we are open to that and then delay, but to delay the, the uh purchase of the um small, excuse me. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not articulate because of the decrease and increase. It's getting me all flustered.
No worries. You are doing excellent. So it sounds like, gosh, this is driving me nuts.
I know this, I'm sorry.
Let me just make sure my phone and everything is kind of pulled away. Um, so it sounds like what you all are proposing and definitely correct me if I'm wrong. Um, that you're going to remove the um, the suggested decrease in the uh recreation large bus. Um, item. Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. We're keeping the delay for the recreation large bus. And that we are um removing the recreation. Because I thought that the proposal was to delay the purchase of the large bus.
May I? Negatives, that's why we're getting all spun around. What we would like to see happen is that the big bus gets sold. And that the small, and that the small bus get kept for another year. And that the uh, s- large bus get replaced with a small bus. Uh, this year with a lift on it because the large bus currently has the lift on it. So I'm sorry, but it's very complicated because I have here my votes and the decrease, increase, and it gets to be a series of double negatives. So. I, I know what we want. If you can just make that happen. Thank you, Daryl.
Yes. Daryl.
If I can paraphrase.
I'm sorry, just one thing and Mr., I'm sorry that Mr. Gagliaro just left. But he had emphasized several times that the uh bus has been very, been used very little in the last year. And I just uh would like to point out what the, or pass along what the recreation uh director told us, which is that. The usage was down ever since COVID started and they have not really started to use the, the buses since then. Uh, I still think it's a, a low mileage to be turning a vehicle over, but it's not being used as uh, as. Um, either the recreation department or I think the council envisioned when we purchased it and it's going to. Uh, be a better situation to have the two smaller vans instead of the one large and one small. And there's a lot of reasons for that and we won't go into those today.
But I want, I want to just acknowledge the staff that themselves said, hey, we think we could live for another year on not replacing the small vehicle. Even though it is in the equipment replacement reserve and I just want to um say that is, that is the right thing to do. And I think that um, it's, we are going to be in an economically better place if they sell the big bus. And we actually get some use out of two small buses because right now we're trying to grow our recreation activities. And in order to grow the recreation activities and let's say have the teens go one direction and the seniors go a different direction. We need to have at least two vehicles to do that and look. Now I'm cut off. Is it working? Okay, uh, and, and so. Uh, and if they need to top that up, we had some discussions around the possibility of using a car. So if you have 18 people and they can't all go on the bus. A car is a much cheaper option for um topping up that, that attendance and yet you can still provide a lift for those, for the seniors, for example, who, who need a lift. So anyway, we, we think it's a really good solution and I'm real, we're more than happy to elaborate on that for community members that I know a lot of people had a lot of really detailed questions and we asked those questions.
Okay, so I do just want to make sure that we're clear in terms of how the reconciliation list will, will pan out. Um, Director Berthright, do you have any suggestions in terms of how we communicate this in the reconciliation?
I think first and foremost, and uh, Deputy City Manager might want to speak to this. Because it's an equipment replacement reserve, it doesn't have any direct impact on the tax rate. So that is why it's not in that amount column, but in the opposite. So we just want to clarify that you could put it off and definitely it would not change your tax rate. So what we're trying to reflect in the list we have is to go ahead and put what was the large bus, turn it into a small bus with a lift. In the budget for FY24 and for the small bus, which was in 24, to delay it by at least a year.
Okay.
The small bus requires a CDL.
Neither bus requires a CDL. The one caution I would have with going with something beyond the bus itself, if you have additional program participants, is then you have to staff it. So it typically then requires additional staff person, which can sometimes be problematic, but not, not necessarily.
And just to be clear, we had really, really productive conversations about that, so again, I'm more speaking to the community, but I, I know that, for example, there are union agreements, too, that also prevent staff from doing certain things, and all of that was, was part of how they distribute staff and how this could work in the future. So we, we think this is a really good solution. Can I, can I proceed with one more item?
Yes, you can.
Mayor? Because it was really important to me, it was mistyped, I think, at the last meeting. I, I would like to take away, and I'm sorry, I don't, don't see it on there, it said that I, Hanzak, had proposed to reduce the police force by one captain, that was absolutely never said, even, I had, I had asked a currying, querying question at the last meeting to the police chief at eleven-thirty at night. In my first foray into this subject, can you speak to the size of your police force? And somehow it got written as a line item about a specific captain position. That was not my intention, nor the direction of, of travel that I intended, and I just wanted to be very clear on that with everyone in the community. So if you would please remove that completely, I, I have no intention to move that direction.
And can anybody find that?
Yeah. It has already been removed, thank you very much.
Perfect.
I wish we had.
Okay, all right. So, again, just in, to keep us on, on track, again, where we're focused right now are errors that members of council would like to correct for the reconciliation list. Councilmember Small.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor. If, if we could scroll this a little bit down to. The, there is a thing on here that I would like to have all of. I'd like to have a greater understanding and a greater conversation about all of these things later, but specifically, the New Hampshire Avenue project that has a match should be removed from my suggestions for the reconciliation. Additionally, the match for the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project should be removed as well. The, and then there was.
Excuse me, can I just confirm that first twenty percent match, was that the Metro Branch, Branch Trail, the twelve thousand?
And the reason for that is basically that if we have committed dollars or something, and there's a match requirement, I am fully in favor of those things, I think that that is centrally important. And in general, I, I wish there was a FTE in here, or a halftime FTE that was a grant rider, but that's neither here nor there at this point. The other thing that I am also willing to remove from here is the Bike Improvement City Match. My personal opinions about biking on New Hampshire Avenue are probably more like Ralph Nader in that it would be unsafe at any speed. But I am not in favor of taking away proposed projects that have match funding. I think that I am also unwilling to have my name associated with the Public Space Management Plan Implementation Reduction, and so I'd like to have that removed as well. And also the Work Order System. Part of the reason why I asked for all of these things to be put in this reconciliation process, in this manner, is that there are a lot of places within the budget where spending is folded into or under something, and the presupposition is that all of those things are just gravy. I don't necessarily think that that is the case, and so it was important that everyone get the chance to see all of these things. Additionally, the enhanced data center security and firewall and IT is also something that I would not be willing to actually have removed. I think that the issue here that has been demonstrated by this list is that the manner in which we go about trying to purchase these things obfuscates either both their value or their necessity by the way in which they are rolled out. And by having the opportunity to look at them in this manner, everyone is now aware of these issues. I also think that we will get to a larger statement of the overall opinion that I have on these things later, but I will say that with regard to our capital improvements, and with regard to our desire to make purchases out of the reserves, I just think it's important to prove why we should be doing those things. And if they are not on the reconciliation list, then no one has to prove anything about that. And so at this particular time, I am comfortable with all of my proposed removals from my proposed reductions. And will hold my tongue until we have some sort of larger statement of where each individual person is.
Great, thank you so much. So for, just for Director Chung and Director Braithwaite, I do want to just let you all know that I was planning to suggest that we move our grant matching items to ARPA. So, the Metro Branch Trail City Match, the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project City Match, the Bike Improvement City Match, and then the New Hampshire Ave City Match.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the city, the match on the, the bike improvement. The bike improvements at eight, at forty thousand, like, I, I also proposed deleting that, and that was because there wasn't a match for that?
Oh, so my understanding is, and that there's two items, but I want to follow up with, with our Director Eubanks.
The forty thousand dollars in Bike Improvement CIP is a separate program from the matches that Councilmembers Small have already removed, so those are not affiliated with an existing grant program.
So, David, line seventy-two Bike Improvement City Match, ACD is not a city match?
Line sixty-two to forty thousand.
Right, so I thought that there was two forty thousand dollar ones.
The line seventy-two City Match is a city match.
It's a city match, right. Yeah, so there's, yeah, so there's two city matches. So, in short, the, the four city matches. If, 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 if I'm keeping this, if I'm, if I'm keeping this right, I just want to go back and triple check. I'm trying to, I thought I had it under control. Let me go to the CIP.
And, and we think there's a duplicate in Bike Improvements. So, line sixty-two, line seventy-two, Director, oh, thanks, Ira.
Thank you, Ira. Let me turn you on. Hold on one second.
Ira Kowler, Acting HCD Director. Yeah, sorry, I, I don't quite, there should only be one forty thousand for Bike Improvements. It does not match anything, it is for bike implementation, the rest of the money is for matching funds for design grants, so. Correct, so there's three grant city matches that all have names, the Maple Avenue, the Metro Branch Trail, or the Met Branch Trail, excuse me, and the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Ways.
Okay.
All of those are matching grant funds. There's a separate forty thousand dollar CIP item for Bike Improvements. That funding is for implementation of Bike Improvements, the rest are for designs, but it does not match any other grant fund, so it is just forty thousand dollars to implement Bike Improvements with no matches.
Okay. Thank you very much, because I don't.
So I believe we've got that reflected now on the list, we've taken out line seventy-two as a duplicate, and we're leaving in line sixty-two.
Excellent. So, so we would be moving the Metro Branch Trail City Match, the Maple Ave Connectivity City Match, and the New Hampshire Ave City Match to ARPA. And, and I do want to stress that I think that these are appropriate, in that many segments of what is being covered by these capital improvements are actually in some of our more, and to really advance alternative approaches and safer routes for transportation in segments of our community that we are desperately trying to reach, so.
And I just wanted to say, as, as a person who put these up on the block, I am a hundred percent accepting of moving these particular funding items to ARPA, because I do believe that long-term projects with, with dividends that pay to the citizenry are a valid use of those funds. I am not necessarily as comfortable with not doing that, given the fact that we have this opportunity and we still have ARPA money that we do need to spend. And the only other thing I would say, I guess I would say at this point, is that it is not a mistake that I put sustainability and trees, but we will get to that later.
Yep. Yes, we will. So, I just want to make sure, we're, we're pausing a minute to make sure that our, so I want to, I'm gonna.
It's, it's in relation to this, about the bike, can I just make sure that, on the bike match?
So, the forty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've just learned that that's not a.
No, I know, I, I wanted to address something to my fellow council members about that, because we had talked about where to put that, and it might be easier to do it right now, since we're talking about it. Can I, may I just make that? I had spoken with, I'm looking at my fellow council members about the forty K for the bike programming, I was able to speak to some of our staff today, and I would like to suggest that that one also be moved to ARPA, even though it's not a match, rather than what I had discussed with a fellow council member of possibly supporting, removing it from the budget altogether. Councilmember Fulcher, what do you, if you'd like to think on that?
I, I have a question about that.
Okay. So, yeah, 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 yeah. Yep, yep, yep. Because I, because honestly, I moved it into ARPA thinking it was a part of a match, so we're, we're all in the same place, yep.
Okay. I, at, at a base level, I do think that it would be plausible to make Bike Improvements a part of the ARPA funding. I just, I'd say that just at a base level. However, it is unclear to me what those actual improvements are, and what the value of those improvements are vis a vis the larger program of either Connectivity or otherwise. And so, it's not as if I am objectionable to it, but I just don't necessarily feel like the materials that we have received thus far justify that particular spending. And so I'd like to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. So, right now, it's, we're not voting yet, so, but right now, it sounds like Councilmember Hanzak would like to propose, and I will second that, moving the bike, the bike improvements to the ARPA. And then we'll vote on it tomorrow, and, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, and then people can decide. So if there are, to the Acting Deputy City Manager, if it is possible, I know that, that there's been some conversations around what those funds would be designed to cover, if it would be possible between now and Wednesday, to make sure that we're able to communicate to council what those funds would cover, that would be great.
And, and can I just interject here, my apologies, right now it had Fulcher with the reduction of the forty thousand, what I'm hearing is Small with the redu, potential reduction of forty thousand, do we want to put both these names?
Well, we had the same thing, and I, I just wanted to make sure that my duplication was a little bit. If it's, if it's not a match, then I think my reservation about the explanations would still stand, so you could put my name next to it, so, it's not like, it's not like it can't be moved, I'm not, I'm not, you know, ready to it.
I'm, it doesn't matter how it is on here, I'm willing to talk to Councilmembers Hanzak and Small before we meet again on Wednesday to hash it out.
Sounds fine.
Perfect. And want to turn things over quickly to our Acting HCD Director, Ira, to give us a little bit of details about what these funds would cover.
Sure, and I'm happy to provide more details in writing later, but by and large, this money is for the actual infrastructure of Bike Improvements, right? So that's the installation of bike lanes and the demarcations of them, bike racks, bike repair stations as well, we've been using these funds to enhance our bike repair stations throughout the city. And again, happy to provide some more details on any spaces identified or whatnot by our planning team, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you know if you'll have any specificity about what that forty thousand is planned to go towards in 2024?
Sure, so I think the broader point is, this is a, a traditional year-to-year CIP budget line, so it's kind of a line that we use throughout the year when either repairs are needed, or new stations are identified, or new opportunities are identified. So I think the answer is probably going to be that a lot of those funds don't necessarily have specific locations tied to them yet, but are used throughout the year, right? So, you know, I believe if you look at our spending from last year, we, we've spent down most of those funds from last year and do most every year, so.
Okay. Councilmember Gibson, just reminding my colleagues to help keep us focused, we are looking for things that you would like to remove from the list, because maybe it was there in error, or you, you've had a change of heart. So, Councilmember Gibson.
Well, first of all, not, not a change of heart, I feel very strongly about the item, one of the items I proposed, which is a property tax credit of addition, an additional one hundred and forty thousand. But I have learned, Councilmember Dibala shared with me that there are ways that we can increase that money, as money is, is, that is, would be needed for the potential eligible fixed income homeowners that, that I, that I want to reach to. So I'm, just want to change the number from a hundred and forty thou, a hundred and forty thousand to seventy-five thousand. Again, it's just as important, but there's a, there's a certain guesswork in terms of how, how many eligible folks we will identify, and there is a possibility, if we identify more, that we may be able to, to get additional funds.
Okay, so just checking with Director Chung and Director Braithwaite, we got that one? Okay, perfect. So do we have any other items that are on the list that are errors that we want to make sure that we correct off, off the top? Okay, perfect. Okay, so, now, what I would like to do is, no. Now, what I would like to do is, because we've tackled a couple of the, a couple of the items that I think are a little bit more low-hanging fruit, now, let's get into a couple of items that relate to the, the ERR, and I just want to make sure that we're clear in terms of the, we've already talked about the bus. We also still have the trash truck and the two police vehicles, as well as the third floor renovation that is on the list. Are there any council members that have any questions, or would like to make any modifications regarding the items that are captured here in the general fund expenditures? Please note, ERR-related matters do not impact the tax rate. Directly.
I, I have a clar, I just have a clarification, is it my turn? So, when it says decrease, are, is the proposer talking about moving it into the next year, or eliminating it completely, like we'll never have it? And that would be a question for both of them, I just want to be clear, which one we're, we're thinking about.
For the two that have my name next to them, it would be a delay by one year, but I wanted, I had, I had asked some questions that I don't. But I wanted, I had, I had asked some questions that I don't, have, have I gotten... They were, it was at eleven-thirty last night. So, I understand if the answers haven't come yet.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
It depends on what questions they were.
Oh, the ones related to the trash truck and the two police vehicles? Does that sound familiar?
You're right next to Director Braithwaite.
Okay. No, I didn't know if now was the time to ask them. I had written them all down. Yeah.
I, I didn't get any questions about the trash trucks. I haven't seen that yet.
Director Eubanks, did you get a long list of questions for me? I only sent one long list of questions.
I'm sure I did.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, no critique, no critique. And I'm, I'm sorry they came so late in the game. I don't have them in front of me because I assumed that at some point I might get them in writing. My, my recommendation, well, my question, it was another one of these mullings, is what would happen essentially, and how bad of shape? I am particularly, I have particular reservations about the trash truck because that is such an essential service. I want to make sure we are, we are fully covered and we're not at risk of, you know, not having a trash, a trash truck when we need one.
Right. I, I can provide some general information. The truck is thirteen years old. That is pushing it. And we do push our trash trucks because they do have relatively low mileage as compared to commercial trash trucks. Commercial trash trucks are usually replaced every seven to eight years. Some municipalities go ten years. We go thirteen. As we've seen in the information we provided previously, the current trash trucks are costing us eight to ten thousand dollars a year in maintenance. We anticipate them to continue that type of deterioration because of the mechanisms associated with, with the trash truck itself. We keep a pretty tight fleet in that every day we use at least three trash trucks, two for trash, one for recycling. So, we have a fleet of five. So, we have spares. That fifth is a previously replaced trash truck. So, of the two that we propose to get rid of, we will be keeping one around as a backup. So, one we will sell, one stays around. So, you know, basically, we keep a live fleet of four plus a, a holdover, a deadline truck, if you will, for urgent situations. I would definitely not replace, recommend delaying the replacement of those trash trucks. They need to be replaced. They are a high-ticket value. If we have our spare go down and our backup go down, we are left with extending the workday for staff, which has some significant implications, and moving staff from other functions into supporting trash collection. It is something we do on a daily basis, five days a week. So, it's, it's a real urgent and necessary piece of equipment. Contrary to a comment made earlier tonight, it has been on the ERR for replacement. This was not a surprise. We planned for this. We knew thirteen years from when we purchased it, we needed to replace these. So, it, it's been planned and known and, and in the ERR, we've been funding it over the course of its thirteen years. So, again, it will have no impact on taxes. Money is available in the ERR to replace it. We do know, based on previous purchases, every year we delay the purchase. The cost goes up significantly. The only other added potential benefit of delaying is perhaps the EV technology will move along further in a year. That said, we are looking at EV options. We anticipate higher cost for the EVs. We've already got price proposals for the diesel-powered version. So, we know kind of what the cost is for that. We're well within our budget for that. But with the EV, we don't yet know. But I would strongly recommend not delaying the trash truck purchase just because of the cost.
I think this was on my item as well.
Yep. Councilmember Gibson?
I just want to say, I, I'm comfortable delaying a year on, on both, both of the, well, the trash truck and also, also the police vehicles. Yes, when we talk about eight to ten thousand dollars per year maintenance, that, that compares with a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar cost. So, I, there were two that were proposed. I, I would like to see if one could be delayed.
I will, I mean, I'll keep my name right there because I'd like to continue the conversation a little bit more in-depth, maybe. And I, and, and the other items, I don't know that the chief is here anyway, so I can, I can get some more information. Oh, is he? Okay. If, I mean, if he'd like to speak to that now, maybe the public would like to hear too. So, yep, chief, if you're there, if you could talk a little bit more about your one to two, one to two vehicles was my suggestion, perhaps my colleagues was to. Right here.
So, we're not able to hear you, chief, if you're talking?
I, I'm trying.
We see you on closed captioning and we can read your words.
Let, let me see what I can do.
We hear you now.
Oh, okay. Must have been, I've been on my end. I, I just said, we, we've given a comprehensive overview of our, our vehicle replacement policy, schedule, et cetera. Just, I, I really want to let the public know. Last, so we pushed, we've already pushed a vehicle that was scheduled to be purchased next year out one year. So, when we were looking at these budget-cutting meas, budget-cutting measures a few months ago, that was one of the things we looked at. So, we've already taken one of the vehicles that was scheduled to be purchased in next fiscal year and pushed it out one year. You know, so, so just for the public, we've already done one. Could we get away with extending an additional one or, or two more? Yeah, we could. But, but once again, we have a comprehensive policy in place to, to replace vehicles. So, we have good vehicles on, on the road. I think what's critical for the police department right now is because we have not been able to purchase vehicles for, for so long because of the pandemic, is to get new vehicles in now. So, if we're able to get the five that we just were able to purchase in, we're able to get the four that we're still waiting on and we're able to get new vehicles, we're at least able to get those vehicles into our fleet. So, I'd have to look at it, but it, you know, I, I, like I say, we, we already did this exercise and, and decided that, that operationally, one could be pushed out and that's already reflected in the schedule. You know, whether or not to get pushed out, you know, it, it could potentially have an impact on the fleet depending on, on wear and tear of vehicles, if a vehicle's involved in an accident and so on and so forth. But I'd, I'd be willing to answer any direct questions offline if you have any additional questions about it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. And I do have one question that's also in this section. And that is about the tree fund expenditure. Oh, sure, sure, sure. Go ahead.
Before we leave police vehicles, Police Chief, could you, if you have the numbers in front of you, would you be able to just go over for everybody what you went over with me about the number of vehicles and who uses them? That, because earlier this evening, there were some statements about how many people, how many officers using how many vehicles. And I just want to get you to, to repeat that so that everybody hears it. Thank you.
I, I appreciate the question. I, I think statement earlier is that we had fifty-nine vehicles, patrol vehicles for forty-three officers. That's not correct. I think if you look at all the budget information provided, especially around the ERR, it will give you the specific allotment of vehicles assigned to the police department. And it's not fifty-nine. I think there's some confusion about that because of some of our deadline vehicles, meaning vehicles that are no longer being used are on that list. But if you look at that list specifically, I think there's, there's ten or so vehicles that are listed that are not active vehicles. And just to understand, it's not just our patrol officers that utilize vehicles. It's also our detectives. It's also our, our parking enforcement. It's also our admin team. So, it's not just patrol officers. So, I, I don't have the, the absolute accurate count. Director Braithwaite might have that available, but if not, we can get that to you as far as total number of vehicles assigned to the police department.
Thank you very much. And again, just want to talk through the tree expenditure item.
Pardon me, can, Mayor, point, point of order, if I may. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but before we move on, I, I would, I, I guess I neglected to say this. I would be interested in considering a similar conversation. If not the trash truck, then perhaps the roll, roll, rollout truck. And I just want, roll-off truck, just a conversation, a similar kind of conversation about that because these are such large capital purchases and kind of, you know, again, your assessment, your really qualitative as well as quantitative assessment of whether or not that could be delayed by one year just to help.
Should we add that to the list?
Yes, could you please? Thank you.
Okay, great. Again, just want to, I'm going to pause a second to make sure that we have that. But again, just want to reiterate, delaying a year. Yep. Yep, yep. All right. So, let's, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this last item. I'm trying to get us out of the tree expenditure, the tree fund item. So, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the source of, oh, sorry, I gave you all the pause.
Director Chung, the roll-off trail is eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Okay. All right. So, the, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the, the tree expenditure item. So, can you confirm that this is actually funded not through the general fund but through the tree fund?
Yep. The way this is set up, and we, you may remember, we did a budget amendment this year to go from added another. We had originally forty thousand from the tree fund to support Tree Tacoma. Because we got so many subscribers, we asked for an additional twenty-three. So, it went up to seventy-three thousand dollars for FY twenty-three. So, the entire program of the Tree Tacoma, which is managed and run by Casey Trees, it doesn't require our urban forest manager's involvement in the site visits, the consultations, or the tree planting. It's all done via contractor. And we went out to bid for that contract. So, that's a competitively awarded contract with Casey Trees, a very well-renowned company that does public outreach and education around trees. It also has its own nursery. So, we're getting very high-quality trees planted. This program took the place of what we used to do, bulk buy, which was a city-intensive program. We had a landscaping firm that did the tree planting. We didn't do any onsite consultation. We didn't do site visits. We just asked people to apply and then they were able to get a hundred dollars off the, the tree. After our last tree canopy and tree ordinance resolution, the urban forest manager developed this Tree Tacoma program to reflect the direction of the council at the time, which was to enhance and, and push forward more quickly on tree replacements and tree planting, particularly in areas that were under-canopied in terms of lower tree canopy and to focus efforts on those areas as well as commercial multifamily properties and institutional properties. So, that's been the direction of the Tree Tacoma program. And when we had an intern in place, they were doing direct outreach to those commercial institutional properties and multifamily properties. In addition to that, we have an application form for people to apply to get a, a free tree. Now, the cost is no cost. So, it's not a hundred-dollar reduction. It's a zero cost. In the current proposed budget in FY twenty-four, the original doc, revenue assumption was based on that previous twenty-five thousand that we'd done in years past. The department's intention was to make that ninety-seven thousand from the tree fund. So, the tree fund currently has two hundred and some thousand dollars. That is a dedicated fund that's only allowed to be used for tree planting. And so, we are seeing this as a way to use those funds rather than, you know, be kept in, in the bank and to put them directly into tree planting with the opportunity we have for Casey Trees. We anticipate that we're going to have higher numbers at the first few years based on the amount of money we have in the tree fund and the aggressiveness with which we're promoting it. We imagine it will decline over time. Currently, every year, we generate between thirty-five and fifty-five thousand in the tree fund. So, we anticipate going forward, once we expend the bulk of the bunnies in the tree fund now, we'll have a kind of a standard, you know, an operating budget based on that type of assumption, a thirty to fifty-thousand-dollar program. So, the intention is to always do it by contractor, always use very high-quality trees, always do the site visit. We only plant native trees. And to have that program entirely managed by outside tree consultant working directly with our residents.
Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you. I am the one that proposed this and I just want to be clear that I'm very supportive of tree canopy in our city. But the reason that I proposed this is, A, I was looking for various places that I thought we could reasonably cut from the general fund. I want to be clear too, I, if it's in here, I have not seen in our budget book the tree fund. I don't know why. Is that because it's in the general fund at the moment, but it's, it's put in a separate bank account? Is that, is that a fair statement or is there some other way that we would see it?
It's currently a liability account. So, it, it isn't reflected in the budget document in terms of the tree fund balance. The only piece you see in there is the revenue transfer from the tree fund to the general fund. So, right now, it says twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue on page thirty.
Okay, yeah, I think I saw that. But that was rather confusing.
Yeah, there's a tree fund item. It should be ninety-seven instead, instead of twenty-five.
Okay. So, so the current balance in the account?
Yes, which Director Chung just confirmed. It's a hundred and ninety-seven because we had that in.
That's assuming the two-year contract has been paid with Casey Trees?
Yes, we've...
Okay, so it's a one hundred and ninety-seven K balance right now?
It's expending the seventy-three that we did this year out, out of that.
Okay, so, so my, my vision here, if I, and it sounds like I, I think I do understand it correctly. And, and I know this may not be well-received by everybody. But my vision here was that it seems very logical that we can still achieve the goals that our city has set out and do it well. And I hope that our urban forest manager, who I have a lot of respect for in all the programming that we are doing and that he is leading, would perhaps, you know, twenty-five to fifty percent of his salary could come out of the tree fund itself because his role in the city is also to manage and maintain our tree cover. And in the next ten years or maybe fifteen years, it is my observation that our old-growth trees are going to be dying. They are now dying. Everybody knows this. We have a tall canopy. We're going to see more money going into our tree fund over the next ten years or so than we will perhaps, I hope, in ten or fifteen years based on what my basic knowledge is of our tree canopy. And we have, we will also reach a threshold at which we are maybe not going to want to keep planting and planting and planting. And I am particularly interested in making sure that we do not make any cuts to putting trees on commercial property, multifamily properties, public properties. That is really important and it's not been done enough adequately. And I know too that there is a gap. We have land on private property where we can plant trees that haven't been planted. However, in a tight budget moment where we're trying to rectify our fiscal health, I think this is a very sensible thing to do. It still aligns totally with our values, allows us to do the things that we want to do, perhaps at a slightly slower pace. But I'd be happy to share some anecdotes about why I think this would make sense. And I'm just going to share a very quick one, which is, I have spoken with some higher-income residents who have taken advantage of our, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but have used our Casey Tree program, who clearly were able to afford to place trees on their properties and were doing so anyway. And perhaps they planted one or two extra trees. Some of them actually took three of those slots. I, I think we need to talk about management of the program and I'm sure you would be open to that. But I really think that perhaps this isn't the right way. It's a very nice perk of being a resident of Tacoma Park. And I, I mean, I'd love to take advantage of it myself, but my yard's full. So, you know, I think, I think this is a very sensible place for us to cut and still align with our values. And I'll leave it at that.
Let me just say, we'll need to get guidance as to whether or not we can pay salary out of those funds. I believe it's code-defined that the money goes to planting trees. So, we'll need the city attorney to review that.
Yeah, I did read the code myself and I believe it's the third-line item on the code that seemed to me to, to associate with, and I, I don't have in front of me, but the maintenance of our tree cover. And I believe that that is a key role of our, that is broadly defined, of course, but it seems to be broadly worded. I'm not an attorney, but you know, I just, that is where I got this idea from.
Yeah. So, so one of the things that I would like for us to keep in mind is that what we're talking about right now is revenues from the tree fund. So, if it requires a policy change in order to re-obligate dollars from the tree fund to pay a salary, I would, I would argue that that may be something that we would add to the... I would, I would argue that that may be something that we would add to the list or the growing list of activities that we would need to address as a council and allow for the continued funding of the tree fund revenue. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. My, my concern here about the, the, the tree fund issues is, is candidly revenue-based. And it's related to the fact that, that I know that people in different places probably have different opinions about the tree canopy. But in Ward Six, or at least in New Hampshire Gardens, the trees that were placed next to homes do not have satisfactory root balls to sustain them. And in particular, there is at least one street which every single tree has fallen down, two-thirds of those being on people's homes. And I find that to be of great concern. The other issue that I have about that is that the funding mechanism for the tree fund presupposes that you are obligated to pay for the tree in lieu if you don't want to put a tree in. And insofar as that is true, I find that to be philosophically onerous, in particular, on people who may not necessarily have the means to deal with the escalating costs associated with trees. And so I would like for this to remain on there, because I think that it is, like, if there is any sort of philosophically regressive part of the Tacoma Park revenue system, it is forcing people to pay for trees, or trees in lieu.
Okay, so it sounds like there is a desire for Councilmember Small to be added to the proposed buy?
Yes, and let me just say that one of the things we are hoping to address with this program is when you have onsite consultation and a licensed person selecting the location, you won't get those poorly-planted trees. You won't plant a tree too close to a house that has a impacted root ball. I also just wanted to make a comment to Councilmember Hanzak's comment. When you have a tree in decline, you don't have to pay to the tree fund to get it removed. That, that was one of the major changes that was made in the tree ordinance the last time it was revised. So the only time you're paying into the tree fund when you want to remove a tree is it is a live tree, a healthy tree. Then there is a tree impact associated with that and a replanting mechanism. Again, that's all defined in code. So to change that, we would need to change city code. But if you have a dying tree, if you have a tree that was planted too close to your house and is causing foundation issue, those aren't trees that require a replanting. So those are already eliminated from, as you might think, the regressive policy. But the tree code is very clear that if you're removing a healthy tree, for instance, to expand your house or whatever reason, there is a replanting requirement. So it's not every tree that you take down. If it's dying, if it's hazardous, if it's impacting a structure, there is no replanting.
Yes, and I know the, the prior council really worked hard. Councilmember Dabala really worked hard to deal with the health and safety aspects of the tree we're planting. Okay, so I would like for us, if there's no other questions around these items, I would like for us to get to the wage. Okay, Councilmember Gibson?
For a while, I just wanted to, very, very briefly, do want to, we identified policy items that we would have later. I think the policy that, in terms of the, the planting on individual residences, that, a review of that. I, I certainly think that at times it is, it is necessary. I, I received an email, one person who, who paid, paid for the tree himself, and I think that, that could be encouraged. I think the real value for moderate-income houses is the technical assistance, but they can pay for the tree. I'd like to review that, that policy. And I do think that, or at least my understanding is that the tree policy now, those plantings, are targeted, not entirely, but targeted in low-canopy areas around the city. That's, so that's private or public property that, that, that needs to have that cover for stormwater issues, et cetera, et cetera.
I just have one question about that.
I'm sorry, I would like for us to move forward to items that relate to the actual tax rate.
I would like to offer a place where we can have this discussion, which is when the draft tree plan comes in, urban forest management plan, which we required when we made all these changes about health and safety. That plan's supposed to come in front of us, I believe, in a couple.
In a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, and that sounds like the place to take all this.
Yep. All right, let's move on to, to things that impact the budget. So let's, one of the things that I had requested was to take a look at twenty-twenty-four vacancies with an eye for what a six-month hold on vacant positions might, how they may impact the budget. One of the things that I think is critically important is that we are not negatively impacting staff who could potentially find themselves in a situation where they're continuing to be underfunded and undersupervised, and that was never my intent. But one of the things that I do think is just judicious for us as councils is to take a look at vacant positions with an eye for whether or not they're necessary. And if, if, if not, then, you know, do we need to remove them? Or if we're in situations like we are right now, to what extent can a position be foregone for a couple of months in order to add some additional benefits to the budget? So with that, I would like to, I've had a conversation with Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks to really talk through the, the full list of positions that are on this list. And I do have, I would like to remove a number of these items and stick to a bit of a shortlist. And so I don't know if it would be more beneficial for. Sure, I can go through it. To propose the items that I think may be warrant a bit of a hold without any extreme burden experienced by our staff or the community as a result of the hold. So I can go really quickly. I would like to suggest keeping the policy and data analyst position on the six-month hold list. I would recommend removing the, the HR coordinator item from the list. I would like to withdraw, withdraw that. It's critically important, and we know that our HR office has been understaffed for a very long time. I would like to withdraw our crossing guards. We desperately need them. It would result in additional overtime. I would also like to remove the police sergeant that was spoken about earlier today. All right, hold on, sort of, give me one second, I lost my list, I lost my list, hold on. Okay, then next, I'm sorry, the decrease in the neighborhood services is not mine. So the building maintenance, I would like to keep that one on the list. Please remove the custodians, the sanitation supervisor. I'm sorry, yes, take them off the list, yes. The custodian, the two custodians, the sanitation supervisor, as well as the sustainability manager for me. All right. All right, next, hold on, I'm checking my list. Thank you. I'd, I'd actually labeled it for myself. All right, so we're down at HCD. If we can, oh, gosh, I think I had the, okay. So let's remove the, gosh, did I keep the special, okay, let's.
Let me, before you move on, let me add that the special projects coordinator that should not have been included on the list, that's, that's actively being hired for.
Thank you. So we'll take that one off the list. We will also take off the planning intern. The grants coordinator.
Oh, 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 I see, take it off the.
Take it off the list. Yep. The, and for me, the economic development specialist. Okay, we, let's keep the licensing specialist. Meaning, keep it on the whole list, mhm. The code enforcement.
Mayor, let me give you some context for that.
Thank you.
That is a, that's related to a, a request that was made earlier that's now been removed, which was from Councilman Siemens to have a, a position vacated and, and transferred after six months. So if that is no longer a part of the profile of tonight's discussion, then that should be taken off as well.
Yes, thank you so much, and let's remove that one. So in total, I'm trying to do my math. I put three on hold. So that should be sixty-six, two-nine-seven, fifty-four plus. The licensing specialist, fifty-three, one, eight-nine, thirty-one plus. It should be a hundred and seventy-four? Eight, one, two, three, five, yes, a hundred and seventy-four, two-nine-nine in terms of, say, reduced expenditures.
That's the revised reduced.
Mhm. For this, for this particular activity.
Mayor?
Yep.
Could we hear a little bit, maybe you were about to get into that, but about these three positions and why you'd like to keep them on the list?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. So specifically, a couple of the positions. In, in chatting with staff, although the policy and data analyst position is one that definitely is needed, especially in light of staff, in, in light of this council's desire for more data and more metrics and the ability to measure progress of things, I do think that foregoing about six months of this position, while it's, it's not ideal, it doesn't necessarily stop us from being able to do mission-critical functions while, during that six-month period. So I think that, again, while the position is needed, right, especially as we're trying to move forward with being more measure and data-driven, I think a six-month wait would not be very detrimental to moving forward the city as a whole. The building maintenance specialist, my understanding is that that position has been vacant for, for a while. And while there is a potential for there to be some cost savings associated with having a building maintenance specialist on staff in terms of their ability to do certain building activities in-house, again, I'm thinking a six-month period may not be that detrimental, given the amount of time that this particular position has been vacant. And then the licensing specialist, again, is one that will, is needed. Again, I, I can't stress enough, I feel very wholeheartedly that our staff would not have positions on the list if they didn't need them. But it is a, a point of trying to make sure that for those positions that, again, we're talking about holding off about six months in hiring, that those positions still are there, but we can realize a couple of, a little bit of cost savings associated with just delaying the hiring. Again, my goal in, in talking to staff was to try to identify those positions that are impacting people the most with them not being filled, so that we're not finding ourselves in a position where we're talking about positions that could be really detrimental to the way in which our staff do business.
Mayor, is this a good time to ask the acting city manager his opinion on these suggestions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The policy and data analyst, I, I agree a hundred percent with the mayor. Not hiring that position will delay, what I understand, is, is council's desire to make metrics and our projects and programs more informed by data that we are collecting delayed. And so that, you know, that, that is a priority for us, and, and the policy and data analyst was the, the, the next step in the direction of making those processes more systemic in, in the design, implementation, and review of our programming. It is, though, not a critical function to, or essential function to our existing, existing services. So it is something that we are looking forward to, but I understand council's desire to postpone that. I'll turn over the building maintenance specialist impacts over to Director Braithwaite.
We have had a lot of difficulty hiring that position, it's been vacant for a while. We aren't paying enough, which is why we can't get that position filled. The skill level that we need for that position is one that we're, we're sorely underpaying. So the folks that we get as applicants are not qualified to do the work that we need them to do. That being said, we have a, currently a facility manager, man, facility maintenance supervisor who is a singly managing all city buildings and facility maintenance. It is not a sustainable place to be. You obviously need duplication just for certain types of work, as well as people go on vacation and things happen different times. We could also adjust work schedules so we have coverage over a larger period of time. That being said, because we have it, have had it vacant for well over a year, you know, extending an additional six months is not going to change, change the status quo.
Director Braithwaite, is that placing an undue pressure on your existing facilities maintenance staff that they're having to do lots of overtime, or that they aren't able to take vacation? Or can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, there, it is not resulting in overtime, it has resulted in delay of projects getting completed, things, you know, work being done. It has also caused some projects to be contracted out, HVAC, you know, maintenance, things like that, that the person can't do by themselves or maintain that kind of schedule that's needed. So it, it does add costs in our contracts budget, but we manage that overall, and it does delay the pace of repairs.
I think it might be useful to council if we were able to see a list of kind of how much that's cost you, so we can see, you know, what, what that's worth.
Sure, there is a, well, I guess it's not in, we, we do performance measures which show on an annual basis what we spend in-house and outside maintenance, and so we can provide that performance measure table to you that shows costs over time. We've also, coming out of a very weird series of years with COVID, so building use was down. So if you're going to have a time to be short one staff person in facility maintenance, twenty-one and twenty-two were the years to do that. We are now ramping back up, so I imagine what we were able to skirt through in the past, we won't be able to do forever, because the building uses, is increasing with each month. So, that being said, a six-month delay, it's not going to create a lot of heartburn.
If, if I'm, yeah, I just.
Gibson?
Yeah, just want, I think, in terms of getting the information or data that, to help look at this position and what, it not being filled, the cost of contracting it out, I think, would be an, an additional piece of information useful in terms of weighing this, you know, if it costs that much, or if it doesn't, it's good, it's good to know.
Yeah, yeah, we have that in the performance measures.
And also, quick question, on average, how long does it take to hire?
Boy, that is a million-dollar question. It depends, you know, in, in a perfect world where we have really good advertisements and good slated candidates, I mean, with, we usually leave a position open for at least a month to get candidates. If we could do interviews within the next two to three weeks, say that's two months, and then an offer's made, which can usually take a couple of weeks, and then depending on when a person's available. and then an offer is made, which can usually take a couple of weeks, and then depending on when a person's available. So I would say a tight window is three to four months, a more reasonable window, and David might have a different opinion, is five to six.
I think that's spot-on, but I think as Director Braithwaite alluded to, this particular position has been really difficult to hire for because the salary isn't competitive. So this one has been outstanding for how long, Daryl?
At least a year and a half.
And actively advertised for that time?
With very little response. We get nothing. We, we've had two or three people apply.
Okay, thank you.
And then finally, I'll turn over the licensing specialist's impact over to Director Coller.
Sure, thank you so much. Just some brief context here, the housing division, ideally staffing-wise, has four FTEs. For a very long time, we had one FTE in the division. We moved up to, we are excited to bring that number up to three, I believe, in about two weeks with the onboarding of a community engagement specialist. So this is the last remaining FTE in that division. Certainly, we would love to fill that position and need to fill that position. Kind of the focus of that position is around a lot of the, let's call it, compliance work that goes around both our rental licensing, our rental license appeals, and kind of the management of rental licensing and rent stabilization. So again, we'd love to fill that, but we, we do have a growing team, and I think with having, we're excited to have three FTEs soon. So we'd love to have four, but we're excited to have three.
And Director Coller, those, those responsibilities are currently being absorbed by another staff member?
Correct, by another staff member in the housing division who is taking on some extra responsibilities, certainly.
And receiving some additional pay?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And while you're here, oh, Councilmember Honsak?
I just want, well, you may be asking similar kinds of questions, or were you going to ask something else?
No, we were going to, I was going to mention the economic specialist.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure, you, Director Hubanks, you just, excuse me, city manager Hubanks, you just, you just mentioned that other staff are having to absorb the load. I am aware that as we come out of the pandemic, that there's a huge amping up of trying to manage all the county inspections, as well as relicensing and whatnot. And in fact, I would think there might even be an unusually high workload right now compared to any kind of normal times. Can you speak a little bit to that, just in terms of whether this is actually putting a really high burden potentially on staff and also would have direct impacts on a lot of residents in our multifamily units? Please, if you could speak to that.
Sure, I don't know if I'll have any exact numbers to speak to that. I think one other piece of context I will add here, though, is we will hopefully be coming to you soon with a recommendation from the RFP we recently released for some new rental licensing software. And the hope is that that process, in addition to a staff member or additional staff members, will help streamline some of this work as well. So I think kind of the software and operations side goes hands-in-hand with the staffing side as well here, and kind of having someone onboard as we onboarded that new software would be, would be great, certainly. But we, you know, understand the limitations of that software, so it can take us some time to ramp up as well. And I think to your numbers question, I'd have to follow back over to my housing manager to, to give you a little more context to that piece.
I perceive that that department, because I've had to interact with them a lot myself, just has a lot on their plates, and I also am hearing from folks living in buildings or landlords that it's, it's just, you know, it's taking time to respond. And I, and I try to say on, on housing staff's behalf, hey, there's a real backlog, you know, please give it a little time patience. But it's a pretty serious issue when you're talking about people being able to, you know, get their license, make sure people are, are getting quality housing, which is something we've all talked about. And I am concerned about really significant delays and them being able to play catch-up.
Yeah, and I very much appreciate it. I think very much appreciate when I relay that to our housing division as well and the staff that are there. I think the, the one other piece I'll add here is that the staff member we are bringing aboard next week is the community engagement specialist, whose job is specifically about dealing with those resident and landlord engagement issues and, you know, being the point person to be responsive to those issues and hopefully taking some of the load of other staff to be able to do some of the deeper work.
Okay, so I do want to just touch on the economic development specialist that is currently on the list. And can you just speak to the need for, for that position?
Sure, so just by way of context, I am here both as the acting HCD director, also as the economic development manager. So just to speak for the economic development division, that division, I believe, has always been, and certainly has always been since I have been here, just one FTE, the manager position. In comparison to the other divisions, we have similar-scale divisions in HCD who have multiple FTEs. I think longer term, it's from a staff perspective, speaking for the department as a whole, it's really important that we are able to get another FTE in that division, both to enable us to do some of the deeper policy-related work that we want to do while not losing some of the outreach work that we know is a priority for folks. I think it's also important to have another person there just for kind of institutional knowledge and ability to kind of build off of historical knowledge, off of projects, right? You know, I came in, started fresh in a lot of ways, and I think having another FTE lets us retain a lot of that institutional knowledge. And then just maybe a bit selfishly, but kind of just as a point of fact, at the moment, you know, the economic development manager is also the acting HCD director. Now, it would be great to have some additional staff support focused solely on economic development, especially in this moment, so.
Councilmember DeBala?
Wait, were you done?
I choked, so, literally.
So I just, I just wanted to be, I hear you, it's, it's a very useful position. Is it, it's not a vacant position where there, I'm asking, it's, I think it's not a vacant position where there was somebody in there performing the task. You, you, you were the, the, the head of the program, but there wasn't a second person. And so this would add a second person.
That, that is correct, yes, and.
And there's nobody in there now.
Correct. In fact, in past fiscal years, there was no economic development specialist position. There was, I believe, an economic development intern in years past, but that position had not been filled and had normally been identified as a savings opportunity.
For clarity, that is, it's, it's not a added position, it's a transfer from one division to another.
Councilmember Honsak?
I think you had your light on first.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, no.
That's all right, man. It's the colored people section. The, the issue that I have with this in particular is that when we are talking about this position, having this position at a hundred and three thousand dollars is candidly a lot of money. And I, I find it to be a lot of money because there are lots of city managers around the municipal spectrum who don't even make that much money. And one of the things that has been a continual drumbeat in my ear about these positions is that residents continue to say things about our senior-level or technocratic positions being bloated in salary. And that is a thing that people can continue to say to me via email and otherwise. And I have said on our listserv as of late that it's continually frustrating to me that we have such speculative frameworks for what these positions may or may not do in the future. Particularly since we have RFPs up that aren't even getting responses, and we have actual bids in several areas that are really doing yeoman's work with regard to continuing to ensure that there are businesses who are active in any of these areas. And so I have difficulty understanding what the additional FTE, whether it be moved from one department or another, would do, and in particular, at this financial level. I say that because essentially what that would mean would be that you have specialists who are above the hundred-thousand-dollar level, and we have people who actually work hourly-wage jobs that are relatively heavy and difficult, who don't seem to have, I don't know, this level of support within the structures that we currently have. Some of that could be because of the way we do the negotiations with the unions, some of it could be other things. But realistically, one of the reasons why we have these difficulties with regard to the illusion that our employees are underpaid is because the wage studies that we did incorporate the entire metropolitan DC area and not the actual Maryland area or Maryland municipalities. And because of that, it may look like someone who wanted to be a person who is doing municipal work would be, I don't know, wildly overpaid with regard to the number. And I say that because, again, I have worked in other municipalities. And I say that because I have put buildings in, I got two of them in, as the city manager, in addition to all of the other things that I was required to do. And so because we have all these other economic benefits, I just don't understand why we need this position. And I don't think we have been clear about what the benefits are to either this position or the larger structure. And I say that with all due respect to Ira. What I mean by this is we have a lot of platitudinous statements about things we'd like to do in this area, but we don't necessarily have a lot of concrete proposals or plans.
So I just want to, first, let me ask one question. Is this amount that's included here including benefits?
Yes.
Okay.
The salary itself is sixty-four thousand dollars, and the benefits are thirty-eight thousand.
Exactly. I think it's important for residents to understand that when we're talking about salaries and benefits, many of you may not fully know the total amount that your job is paying you in salary and in benefits. And if you were to see that number, it probably will blow your mind. So that's something that is important to understand. So when we're talking about a hundred and three thousand dollars, we're really talking about a salary that is about sixty-five-some-odd thousand dollars, which in this area is low.
I would reiterate everything that I just said, nonetheless.
So, so that's low. Another thing that is important to keep in mind, what we have seen with our prior housing manager, I'm sorry, our prior, our current economic development manager, our previous economic development managers, is they tend to bring in their salary, either through grant writing and bringing in development grants, through working with various partners to get certain housing projects and things like that, moving and working with folks in terms of development. So I, I want this position because I think that the only way that we're going to ever get ourselves out of this circular logic around our budget is to increase our revenues, and the way in which you do that is through development. And if we are not investing the necessary resources to have the staff that we need that can pound the pavement, talk to a lot of these property owners along New Hampshire Avenue, if they are not able to get in the building with various businesses and corporations and the like to try to solicit new businesses and new employers to our city, we will never realize the dream of having a more diversified approach to our tax revenue or our tax base. So I, I feel very strongly about that. The only way that we can actually get ourselves out of this is through development, and we need people to do that. Councilmember Honsak?
Well, thank you for, for both of those perspectives. I appreciate that. And in, in, in the venue of healthy dialogue, I, I, I today had the opportunity to talk to Ira a little bit more about this specific proposed cut. I did not have this list to see that there were some other places where we might be able to consider other positions. So I, I want to rethink a little bit. However, I, I do want to tell folks about what we talked about today, which is, I mean, it is my viewpoint that right now we have our, what, what, what has been, our HCD director is serving as our city manager. Ira himself clearly can't do two full jobs. That's not realistic. And I think we're looking at at least, I don't know, council, correct me if you think I'm wrong, but we're looking at at least six-month delay on getting folks back into their original positions, if that's even where we're headed. So there is, Ira's FTE is still sitting in the budget and unfilled. So that, I mean, if you want to think of it that way, it's, it's in the budget. It hasn't been removed. So I, I would like to sort of maybe propose that perhaps, perhaps, in lieu of keeping this in the budget and in the spirit of trying to really get our fiscal management under control. And I very much value the spirit of what the purpose of this position is. And I acknowledge that we don't have anybody right now that is capable of acting in this role, and it's a critical and vital role for the city. I would like to see us take his salary and put it towards perhaps someone who might be seen as a temporary person, who might be willing or interested in playing that role in, in place of Ira. And at least, you know, for a six-month contract or something, something thereof. I'd like that discussion to be had, and I know that's, that's a little bit out of line of the budget, but in the spirit of trying to consider what could be done. Thanks.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, Ira, we've discussed a couple of times a little bit of the perspective of the, the economic development and, and your take on it since you've been on and how it was before. You made a distinction, which I think was important to say, that in some, some of the work of the economic development is revenue-oriented, and that's a fairly new, newer approach than what we have used, have placed the emphasis in the past. The emphasis, or the other emphasis besides sort of revenue enhancement has been, I guess, just a sort of more general, general business support. I don't know, I can't remember exactly. I guess, if you wouldn't clarify the distinction between the different types of strategies that in economic development as, as you see it. And, and then it brings me back to a little bit of Councilmember Small's point about the benefits and, and the speculativeness. I think that I, as well as all of us, could, would benefit in, in not just this job, but so all of our jobs, certainly all of our high, major jobs, to have what those benefits are. What are the performance metrics? And for, you had mentioned that there's a possibility or interest in bringing in grants and other projects. That would be presumably a part of, of any metric. In other words, if this person brings in more than they're, they're costing, then, then we're in the plus. If they're not, well, there, there may be other benefits that the person brings in that, that's worth keeping. But I do think that performance metrics that, that measure the revenue side in particular is something I see missing.
Sure, thanks, everyone, for the comments. I, I want to answer thoughtfully without maybe accidentally rambling too much on an open mic here. But, but I think, just to kind of structure my thoughts a little bit, I, I think I, I think we need to view at least the economic development work within the City of Tacoma Park kind of in, in two main buckets. One is the on-the-ground technical assistance, access to capital, access to other support for our small businesses, right? And our business community here, by and large, is composed of hyper-local, small businesses, a lot of new businesses. And a lot of that work can be pretty time-intensive and not have a lot of that maybe revenue reward for the city that we're talking about, right? What we're talking about. What we're talking about is, uh, you know, businesses in commercial districts in a lot of ways as a, as a benefit for residents and, and not necessarily a revenue generator per se, right? Uh, and again, that work is heavy touch and, um, you know, requires relationships and, and time with individual businesses, individual property owners, uh, et cetera. Um, and certainly some of that work is done by our service contract, um, recipients and we're extremely grateful to have organizations like that. As we've spoken about before and we've heard from council, you know, those organizations don't cover the entire city, don't cover all of our businesses. Uh, and we've heard a need and a request to, um, be more proactive in how we're reaching those other businesses. I think the other side of economic development is about, uh, expanding revenue opportunities in the city, expanding growth, expanding the tax base, whether that be through, uh, new mixed-use development, new housing units, new commercial units, so on and so forth, um, but growing that base. And, uh, speaking personally, you know, I think part of the benefit of having a second FTE in that department is it gives the economic development manager position the opportunity to coordinate and lead those discussions. And I think as we've, uh, maybe alluded to in the past, and I think as we need to dig deeper into in FY twenty-four, uh, it is my personal feeling that in order to generate that kind of growth in this city and to see the kind of development that we need in order to grow the tax base and in order to, um, you know, address some of these longer-term discussions that, that we've talked about, uh, there really needs to be some time devoted to not just broader relationship building within the metro region and within the county, but time devoted to kind of public discussions of policy and potential policy changes as they relate, uh, to HCD and that the economic development division is going to have to take a lead on. So, um, I don't know if that answer was helpful in any way, but, um, it, it's just kind of some of the thoughts I have as we're, we're having this discussion and I just wanted to, to share them, so.
Uh, that is, that is helpful. And it, with regard to the performance metrics, um, how would you respond to the, um, my request for that or the?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a big part of that policy discussion is what are the metrics that are important to us and how are we, um, making policy changes and identifying projects that can actually, uh, in- increase those relevant metrics, whether they be, again, tax revenue, new units, whether they be, um, commercial rent, so on and so forth. So, um, yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll confess, I think as a division of not even one at the moment, I, I think that has been a, a piece that we haven't had the time to fully dig into.
Right.
Um, to the degree that we'd want to.
And a part of the, the hiring of the policy and data analysts is to support folks like Ira who are focused on other aspects of the job. But of course, this has been something that's been, uh, discussed for a while. We're at the point now where we have the opportunity to hire and, but, but unfortunately it, it would be delayed another six months.
Appreciate, and I guess in terms of what's the cart and before the horse, I'd, you know, you have to, I think that we don't get the person and then we find out what, what they expected to do. We would have the performance metrics somewhat in place before we hire this person to know that it's worth hiring this person.
Councilmember Small?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, I find these conversations about economic development a little bit frustrating because it's about dollars. And so it ought to be the easiest conversation to have about the dollars. Um, and I guess, like, I'm not trying to, to, to castigate Ira or, um, David or any particular person that is on the staff. However, it really is sort of frustrating to not be able to know what it is that is like vision or direction. And just saying, man, if we had another person, it'd be awesome, is like frustrating to me because I, I just, I feel like if economic development is critical and economic development along the corridors, like in New Hampshire Avenue, you know, they put signs up, we have, we have all kinds of things that have been on the books by the county and otherwise. And like, we could, like, if it said we were knocking off X, Y, and Z of those, I would feel better about this in particular. But because of that and because of the way this seems siloed, I just have difficulty with this position, given these justifications. The other things that I can think of about doing economic development is whistle-stop touring and having lunches with developers and letting them tell you all the things about how awesome they are over and over and over again, until they finally actually put in an RFP and have all the pro formas and everything else done. That process is tedious and arduous, but it's, it's the way it goes. Um, and we, we aren't talking about those things, like the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, like if, if, if there was a plan or if you were like, well, we're going to do four of the things that are on that list, then I, I could, I could understand it better. But if, if we can't address the direction by discussing the money, but we also can't address the direction because it doesn't necessarily seem like it's being articulated, then I'm the one that ends up looking like a bad guy, but in reality, I just want to know. And I'm tired in particular of being castigated by other residents or staff members or council members for trying to figure out what we are actually doing. And I'm not going to apologize for doing that and I'm going to continue to ask. And so as far as these things go, um, I would just say that before we, Wednesday, we need to have a better justification for any of these positions that are going to remain in the budget because we just don't have any. And saying, like, like, I've tried to be as comfortable and willing on all these positions as I possibly could because candidly, like, given the number of positions that we have in the staff, we should be doing all kinds of stuff, given what my metrics and opinions are on how hard municipal government employees work. And we just don't see those things and we don't have, like, like, we got awesome people in a lot of different places, but we also got these weird gaps where we keep being told things are gonna change or are about to change, when we have all kinds of planning documents and all kinds of stuff that have been on the books and I just don't get it.
They require, they require staff. And part of the challenge in the last several years is that when we gear up to do something, when we develop a plan, when we develop a strategy, we implement a hiring freeze or we don't hire somebody for some reason, or we have trouble hiring somebody because we don't pay enough salaries. So what Ira is suggesting, first of all, Ira right now is responsible for the implementation of three or four different grants, um, the technical assistance for areas that aren't serviced by our, uh, our, our, other service providers, um, that we are in contractual relationships with. He's also expected to answer those big policy questions. How do you develop the strategy? What needs to be done in order to get us from point A to point B? What kind of relationships do we have to have at other levels of county, state, federal government in order to see these things move forward? That is too much to ask of an individual. Ira can't do it all. Um, and if the expectation from city council is that we develop a strategy in which we're creating revenue outside of ways that involve increasing taxes, economic development is that answer. But we can't continue to rely on a single individual to provide us all aspects of economic development. And so this particular role is meant to allow for that higher-level development of those strategies and plans, in addition to providing some continuity as people grow and mature and end up leaving the city. Right now, if Ira were to leave, all of his institutional knowledge would leave with him. That means every five years, we have to start from scratch. The next person has to build the relationship with Crossroads and OTBA. Relationship is individually based. Now that tho- those programs, maybe Ira leaves a, a great memo from which somebody can get the gist of it. But it takes a year for somebody to learn it, um, two years for them to get good at doing it, and then in three years, four years, they're gone. And so we keep repeating the cycle over and over and over again. And so this role is meant to try to address several, what I would consider systemic issues, while also be able, being able to, to answer some of those deep policy questions that you're proposing as things that need answers.
Good. And I also just want to, um, chime in, um, for members, um, uh, on council who may not be aware of the level of effort that went into the development of our housing and economic strategic plan and the fact that, that included, um, a work plan and there were a number of activities that our HCD department has implemented that were included as part of that plan. Um, and it also includes a number of priorities that are included in our council priorities as it relates to economic development. And we have always had the case of only having a single economic development manager and if we were lucky, we received an intern. And I've seen firsthand, as a former council member of Ward Six with the largest commercial district in this city, the value, I was here when we first brought on our first economic development manager. And I could tell you firsthand how instrumental it has been for the businesses, particularly in Ward Six, in the crossroads in New Hampshire Avenue, having someone that is really focused on developing the businesses in that, in that area of the city.
My response to that would be that I think Kaylee does a fantastic job at that and is continually and constantly doing that, even beyond her actual hour, um, constraints. My concern here is the same and that is that if we are going to expand this department because it needs to be expanded, because there are com- two different components to economic development. One of them being technical assistance and support for micro businesses and small businesses outside of the realm of any of these bids and broader economic development capture and selection or, um, I, I anticipate one of the quiet parts that didn't get said being something about trying to re, um, imagine what we do with new developments and our, um, rent controls, um, because I think that that's probably the direction that somebody's going to want to talk about in the future and I'm not necessarily sure that I even want to do that. So I guess my, I, I just want to say here that it is not a, it is not a council ogre abuse thing to want to know whether or not we are building a whole cloth process or if we are adding to a larger vision. And the work of any previous council with regard to these issues seems to me to be as relevant as the previous spending patterns of the council. And so that's all I'm trying to say. And I don't understand why we can't, like, like, if, if there is a strident, like, look, we are on the verge. We got this, 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 and like, I, I, I'd love that. I just don't hear that and that's what I am trying to say.
Right now, we have a, we have an open RFP that does have responses that Ira was tasked with managing, but Ira is now acting as the deputy HCD director. So who's going to lead that charge? The specialists, ideally, right? We, we, we've got opportunities at one or two other locations and we have plenty of opportunities of possible expansion and growth along several corridors in the city. It does involve some in-depth looks at some existing policies and whether or not those policies are, are, are pro-economic development or con-economic development. But the point is that there is a logic to a, a, uh, uh, an existing strategy, um, within HCD, um, that exists in a number of different plans, um, a, 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 a number of different policy documents. Um, and so the, 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 the suggestion that those things need to be built, I think, is a fallacy in that they, they, they exist, but we, we have not had the staff capacity and to your point, capital, to allow those things to develop into the opportunities that they could be to generate the types of development and revenue that we would prefer to see the city, uh, grow and manifest into.
I think that if you want these jobs, that you, you gotta make somebody want to give them to you. Um, and like, we, we got an ugly budget process with, um, vituperative residents in addition to people who ran on a little bit more fiscal responsibility. And, um, I am a hundred percent in favor of economic development, hundred percent. Couldn't, couldn't be in more in favor of it. I just, I, I, I don't know, I want, I, that's all.
Okay. Councilmember Dabala?
Yeah, um, very quickly, uh, thank you for this. Are there, oh, there, there've been a number of things mentioned. What if we delayed this for six months as opposed to eliminating it all together? What if we had the intern? What if we had a temporary person? Are it, in your views, are any of those possible? Are they realistic? Would they help? And they all might cost less than this and that's why I'm asking. Cause if the ish, if one issue is right now, we've got a, a gap, so can we focus on filling that gap rather than committing per- potentially to a, to a long-term FTE at, at this level? So that's my question. Is that, is any of that realistic?
Yeah, I, uh, I, I won't speak to the HR portion of it and whatnot. What I will say is, you know, I mean, personally from my perspective, um, I think as someone mentioned, you know, there's probably a position being double-counted in HCD at the moment a little bit, right? In terms of the, the acting roles and, and how things are being aligned. I, I would say the message is, I think it's important to have someone i- within the economic development division who their sole focus is the economic development division for the full fiscal year. Um, and however that gets allotted, that gets allotted. But I, I, I would leave you with, I think that's the important message.
So then, then I would, um, as the person who proposed this, I would like to see what an intern would cost. Somebody knows, I'm sure already, um, cause you had one. Don't have to answer this second, but that would be something I would want to look into.
Counsel-
Realizing that that's a different level.
Yep. I want to make sure that we're able to continue to move this discussion forward, um, as it pertains to an actual reconciliation item. So Councilmember Dabala, are you proposing adding a, um, economic development intern to the budget? Uh, I think in the past, um, it's been about forty thousand dollars, but I just want to, we can verify the numbers later.
That sounds reasonable, seeing as how the other, the intern that's been cut was supposed to be-
No microphone?
Oh.
But-
But your math seems very reasonable, Mayor, seeing as how the planning intern for housing and community development that you have cut, you were approximating that half of that was, uh, like forty-three thousand.
Yeah, so this is, um, thirty-nine, five plus three thousand for, um, various benefits. So call that forty-two and yes, I would like to propose that as a ARPA item. Can we do that?
Could I add to this?
So can, can we just wait one second? So Councilmember Dabala can finish her point?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you're-
That was my point.
So you're asking to add a, um, I guess one of the concerns, are you talking about a one-year add?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, so Councilmember Dabala is proposing a, um, an intern for, um, the economic development intern at forty thousand dollars into ARPA?
Forty-two if you count.
Well, forty-two thousand.
And that forty-two is a full-time?
Yeah, I think that would be the number for a full year.
Right.
Intern, correct.
And that wouldn't be a general fund addition, Director Chung? That would be an addition for the ARPA budget?
Yes. So while we are in- So while we are in this department here, um, in the, in ARPA, I had proposed to add several other interns. A while, um, the other night, but it didn't get added, so. Can I ask, just, is this an intern with no economic development specialist? So they're working?
Correct. There hasn't been a, a move to remove the, um, economic development specialist from the list.
From the remove list.
From the remove list. And so what is being proposed, um, Councilmember Dabala is also proposing the alternative of a economic development intern, um, at forty-two thousand dollars within the ARPA budget. Councilmember Honsack?
Yes, I'd just like to suggest a modification, uh, to your request. Given that Ira's salary is currently in the budget. It could be, uh, possibly covered the whole year's salary with maybe six months of Ira's salary, and it might not need to be added to the budget. Uh, added to the, uh, the, the, the operations plan for the department, but not necessarily to the budget. And I don't know how that works, does that make, if that makes sense?
I would be very hesitant against re-obligating, uh, current sitting staff members' salary for another position. Um, so the, I, 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 I don't think that that is something that we should, um, do because we have a staff member that is currently here. We could find ourselves in a position where we're, um, obligating or double obligating an individual person or sitting staff member's salary. It could be the case that, you know, I don't know, but it could be the case that in, in three months, we have a city manager, um, all, everyone moves back into their regular place. We have an intern and we are now over budget. So, um, I would advise that we don't re-obligate, um, salaries of staff that are currently in place. Okay, um, so are there, uh, uh, I want to make sure. Is there, is there a question about where that, where that item needs to go?
We're just having a bit of a debate because we've separated ARPA items. But I think if we're going to end up getting very confused if we don't have things lined up with personnel together. Anyway, we'll, we'll figure it out on that.
I, I feel your pain, um, because my list is, is doing the same.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, there were a couple of, um, items, um, that, uh, Councilmember, uh, Dabala has, um, in terms of moving the, um, moving a couple of items that are in the budget, um, into other, um, funding buckets. Yeah, you do. Oh, the speed camera fund.
Oh, oh, okay. I thought you were gonna do that.
Oh, I can do it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, um, I will, uh, wait, wait, I give, give folks a second. Yeah, and we have to get to sidewalks. All right, um, are you, uh, it could be easier for us to, to do this to, um, with the, um, um, with the shortlist. Um, a couple of things that we, we would like to propose, um, moving. Um, Councilmember Small had proposed a reduction in the general fund for, um, mobile computers and the field radio. Um, I'm not sure where that is. Oh, yes, that's sixty-nine and seventy-two.
Yes, there they are.
Yep.
Line sixty-nine.
Line sixty-nine and line seventy-two. If we could move that to the speed camera fund, uh, revenue expenditures. So that would free up, uh,
So it, so it stays?
In the budget.
In the budget. It stays as a reduction to the gen- It stays as a reduction to the general fund, but it gets funded then in that other column under speed camera fund.
Correct.
Um, and for those of us who haven't studied the speed camera fund budget extensively, just know that there's a, because we are expecting to put in few red light cameras, there's an estimated revenue, um, that's quite, quite substantial that's not allocated. And so I am, we are suggesting that we take a portion of that. I guess it's about an eighth of that and use that. So, so banking on the fact that it, that there'll be a minimal amount of revenue coming, coming in from those red light cameras. Maybe not all what we, what this, what's been estimated, um, but some will come in. And so use that to cover a couple of these things. That's the proposal.
Right now, the, the speed camera fund, um, has two sources of revenue.
Thank you.
Uh, one is, um, the existing speed cameras. The other new addition, um, that actually was included in the twenty-three budget, but hasn't come to fruition yet are red light cameras. Um, and so the expectation is that in FY twenty-four, those red light cameras, um, would be up and running and that we'd be receiving revenue from them. Uh, because of our experience in FY twenty-three, um, we have been very conservative in our estimates for twenty-four. But also have not, intentionally not added any additional expenses to that fund. Um, because we're, we, this is the first time we, we've, we've had this program. Um, and there's some uncertainty associated with the implementation, um, the timing of the, of the, the, uh, the program funds being received. Um, and so the, I think about four hundred thousand dollars, um, in surplus, revenue to, it, it, revenue compared to expenditure, um, has not been addressed by staff.
Thank you for being more eloquent than me. And so I'm suggesting that we take a portion of that three hundred and ninety thousand, a pretty small portion, and cover these two items that are on the cut list. The tw- the number sixty-nine mobile computers and number seventy-two field radio equipment. I would personally go further, but I'm happy to leave it at that for now.
Okay, and I do just want to check one more, um, item. So, um, the, uh, uh, neighborhood, um, uh, commercial center improvement.
Yeah.
Uh, that, um, we would, uh, Councilmember Dabala and, and I agree, um, would like for that to be funded out of ARPA.
Where it was.
Where it was.
And I don't know how that works with Councilmember Small's proposal to eliminate it altogether. All I can say is on line seventy-nine, I would like it, instead of saying duplicate, I would like it to say move to ARPA.
Move to ARPA.
Thank you for catching that. I'm starting to fade here.
No worries. I'm, 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 I have my cheat list and I'm like, I know we could get a couple cents. Uh, so, um, so the next area that I think would be helpful for us to discuss, um, is the sustainability budget item.
So while, um, may I, is it my turn?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just, I would just like to, I would let, um, Director Braithwaite handle the bulk of this, um, questions that you might have. But I just would like to say that this, that this city council has five overarching goals and one of them is sustainable community. And if there's not a sustainability program, we can't do this work. There's no one else to do it. So that's a decision we had made. There's a, an urban forester. There's nobody for stormwater. There's nobody for other natural resources. This, this is it. So, uh, we also have housing inequity goals that we established. Um, we have ARPA programs that we've designed to, to utilize the staff person to further those goals. If we have no body, and it, and this may be the most important thing in terms of a why right now? Why is this important right now? This is the moment when all the federal money is rolling down through the system, through the state to the, to the communities that are able to capture it. If we don't have a person to do that who knows, has some expertise in climate and infrastructure, we're not going to get that money. And I cannot personally continue to act as the, the coordinator of these, of these funds and being the person to point out which ones we can go for and which ones we can't. We, I, I personally can attest that we need this body if only for that reason. Um, and we, w- we have an opportunity in the next bi-annual report to, so we, so the pre- so previous council, um, had, had adopted a climate emergency, um, did a climate plan, set a goal, developed a cli- a climate action framework. Um, I feel like I'm repeating what, what Director Ubank's, uh, city manager Ubank said earlier. And then COVID hit and we had other things to do and there was not really anybody to do this. So I feel pretty strongly that we need, we need the program in some form. We need the body in the, in the seat. The active advertising has been going on. Um, and, and to delay further, I, I think is, is, what did people say earlier? Penny wise and pound foolish. It's ill, it's ill-advised. It's she, it's shorting us in an area that we have said, we, uh, previous councils have said that this is, this is a critical part of what it means to be Tacoma Park as to the specifics of what the person does and this, and the, and the results that they have, um, have achieved. Uh, I would turn you to the January presentation that, yeah, that we all got to the, um, it, as part of the priorities setting and to some of the other reports that, that have been sent to you that, that talk about that. But, um, I, I feel pretty strongly that we need to work on multifamily buildings and, and we need to both rehab them and to electrify them, for example, because the people who live in them deserve it. This is a person who does that. I feel that it, that it's, it's important to get a, a handle on the money that we deserve because it's our share of the federal funds that we can use to make that people's lives better. Particularly, um, people's lives in multifamily buildings and lower-income homeowners. Um, and I feel pretty strongly that some of the other sustainability work that, that, that has gone on in sustainability in a broader sense. You that residents want to see, want to participate in, you need, you need a body to coordinate the work. Um, to, to work with the volunteers to do the stuff. So I guess I should stop because it's late. But I think there's some good, concrete why, why right now, reasons why we need to do this.
Um, I, Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, um, I, let me be, uh, really explicit here about the sustainability, uh, budget. I am, um, I'm not a person who, uh, wants to live on a dying planet. And, uh, I'm not any of those, uh, things. I am a person who is not willing to spend money fattening frogs for snakes. And that is an old black people term, I think. It may be other people, I don't know. But ultimately, if the premise is that we're, um, going to be sustainability leaders.
I didn't say that.
Um, well?
Well, I did.
Okay. I, I, it is the floor. It's my turn.
Sorry.
If the premise is that we are going to be leaders in sustainability, um, we aren't doing that. If the premise is that we are going to, um, maintain a sustainability framework um, that is, um, easily understood by residents or consistent in the ways in which they can actually participate positively, I would argue that we aren't doing that either. Um, we have, uh, had a lot of acrimonious, uh, statements made about the Green Team. Um, that's here, uh, I would think that would affect our Sustainable Maryland designations and things like that. My argument here with regard to sustainability is that if it is the case that we are trying to get grants in order to pay for things, but we don't have the ability to either manage those grants or we are not currently capturing those grant dollars because we don't have a grant writer or anybody substantively dedicated to any of the grants, then I'm not sure what the value is in presupposing that all of these things will happen in sustainability. I find it ironic that even during the presentations today that, um, with regard to what is available, uh, to any given person, um, there are people who live in the town who are corporate interests or, uh, NGO interests, um, who will tell you off the rip what you can get. And if those things are true, and I know that they are in, including the state programs and federal and, uh, county programs that allow for refitting and upgrading, I don't hear from anyone as of yet why, out of all of the things that people are continually clamoring for us to give back to the county, why we don't give this back? In particular, because they set their own standards and they also apply the state standards. And so my argument here is that if we are going to be continually hearing from people about what it is that is of value to the community and we are going to juxtapose, like public safety, um, in a place where we are dealing with border jurisdictional realities and apathetic counties, I would argue that the sustainability and environmental things would be more effectively given back to a county, particularly a county, um, that is, uh, well-positioned with regard to its previously held environmental goals, including one of the members of this previous council. The reason for that is that ultimately, if the only reason to live here is sustainability, then that's not a good reason to stay here. Because like, I, for example, today, I was just in Gaithers, uh, in Gaithersburg today and it is a, a level or shade more verdant and there is more stuff that is natural and appreciative. We live in an urban environment right next to a large municipality. We happen to have a natural feature that prevents us from building on it. And so it gives us the illusion of living in a really natural, wonderful place. But there are no developers who would build on those areas also. And so I don't think it's of any value to presuppose any of these things will happen or that there's lots of federal money to do things that we don't know what they are. And I also think that of all of the things that the city does that could potentially be more performative than not, it is the current state of our sustainability work. We've had people come in here during presentations and talking about how we don't even recycle correctly here. And so, and, and I, I just, I don't know. And I am unwilling to hitch my fortunes to the previous council and its decision-making on these items given that it hasn't necessarily seemed like any of this actual sustainability work is getting done because of the acrimony around the residents on it.
Okay, Councilmember Small, um, thank you so much. Um, can, uh, just remind me, um, uh, Director Braithwaite, how long ago has it been since our former sustainability manager departed?
That position was vacated at the beginning of October.
Okay, so we've been going now for about, what, seven months or so? Um, and the, um, in terms of the sustainability manager budget, um, can we just confirm what that entails? Um, I know that there is a line item around services, um, can you just, I know that we have a, a sustainability manager. Um, I know that there is a line item around services. Um, can you just, I know that we have a, a Sustainability Manager.
Yes. It's a, it's a single, single position. The intern position was eliminated. Um, primor, primarily that, uh, funding for that department and you'll find that in the information you got on your budget worksheet. Uh, and within Public Works, thirty-six hundred, all the, all the associated budget codes. Uh, primarily it's, uh, personnel salary and it is contracts, which is a hundred and sixty thousand for various, uh, grants. Uh, s- single family, low and moderate income, multifamily and commercial. We've done grant programs for energy efficiency and electrification for the past six years. So this is a continuation of that. In FY twenty-three, we had five hundred thousand dollars that went towards grants for, uh, specifically multifamily buildings and we facilitated numerous others through the county. Um, so the buil- budget and sustainability, that three hundred and eighty-five thousand is primarily salary of the Sustainability Manager, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars for grants, additional twenty thousand dollars for outreach, um, because that's a critical piece if you're going to make any headroads into, um, improving our sustainability footprint and getting people connected to dollars and programs, outreach is, i- is essential. Um, I, I don't, it's too late to go into this, but I, I think there's a real disconnect here. Sustainability in Tacoma Park is not associated only with nature. It's associated with equity. It's associated with uh, safe neighborhoods. It's associated with energy efficiency and cost reduction for people. And it's trying to pe- keep people in their homes and making them safer in their homes. The transition away from gas to electric has definitely got a public health and direct residential health impact. So the work of the Sustainability Department is not to, um, make green ways and, I mean, we're, we're not in that area. That's, that's not what we're, we're here about. It's to-
Are we a participant in the Empower Program?
No.
Why aren't we a participant in that?
I'm not familiar with the program.
That's, uh, my understanding is the Empower Program is a program that is run by at least Prince George's County and Montgomery County in that they help to provide the actual, uh, grants and grant frameworks to the individual residents because of the fact it's more efficient. I, I, my understanding is it's run, um, with Pepco money.
Yeah, we, yeah, we are a participant, or at least we were before Gina left.
Yep.
Well, and beyond that, uh, the grants program, the grants that, the county has a, quite a number of grants. Tacoma Park residents will be eligible for those grants. Um, this, the county's current, uh, Electrify Everything program and energy efficiency work was based on Tacoma Park's grant program that was done for two years. So our pilot program was adopted in whole and used to, uh, inform and create the county's current program that just is about to be rolled out and they've gone through a very long process. Tacoma Park residents will be eligible to that. But there's, um, you know, in terms of sustainability, it's the grant programs for energy efficiency electrification. It's our fleet transition policy. Um, it's our electrification roadmap to identify how we in the city are going to convert uh, away from fossil fuels. It's promoting programs like the Solar Co-op. Um, it is, um, developing a potential fossil fuel ban in terms of ways in which we can, um, restrict, uh, purchase or use of fossil fuel equipment. Uh, certainly the Sustainable Maryland Certified Program, which, of which we are a member and have been for nine years? Three, six. We're about to enter our third, three-year certification. Um, and then, of course, there's, um, the participation that we have among our peers, both on the national level through the Urban Sustainability Managers Network, um, the state level, uh, the regional level through COG, uh, the Building, um, and, and Environment Working Groups, and of course, the relationship we have with the county. So like any programs, the city has its role to play. It has its piece. Uh, it's not the whole puzzle. It's a, it's a real critical part of that piece. So the Sustainability, uh, Budget helps to establish that program piece for the city.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just, uh, like to suggest that at this point, we have accomplished more than we expected to tonight and given the hour, and I think that, uh, maybe it's, we're past the point in time where we should be debating these things and we should be home sleeping to get rested up. Because two days from now, we're, we're gonna have a, another attempt to look at this list. I think we did a marvelous job tonight. That's my personal opinion of, uh, of going to, uh, major part of this list. So I would, uh, ask if we-
I'd echo that.
Just go on.
Uh, I would echo that. I, I'm not trying to get, um, anybody, uh, fatigued and concerned about asking, uh, pointed questions because I'm not trying to do that to anybody. I'm really not. I'm just trying to figure out what the best budget is.
Yeah, I, I want to acknowledge before we adjourn that, that we have a number of council members that have been waiting quite patiently to ask their questions and to speak. And I want to acknowledge, um, those council members who, um, are not able to continue in, in, in respect of their colleagues that have been waiting. Um, you're, you're free to go. Um, Councilmember Gibson?
Thank you. Um, I just, uh, I'd like to get out of here too. I want to just finish up this, this sustainability issue, which has, um, gotten a lot of emails, um, and conversations, uh, to cut it. I am against that. I think that we need to have, um, a coordinator, a liaison. We don't need to have a division, in my opinion. We need to be able to access the grants and technical assistance available from everybody from Pepco to Chesapeake, uh, uh, what's it? Climate groups and, and- and there are numbers of entities and we need to take advantage. We need to be partnering in that. We don't need to set up our own little s- um, program here when we can build off what others are doing. I think we had, we took, we, uh, I want to applaud the efforts that was made and the leadership that the city took. And now we need to, to, I think, step back, we're, because, partly because of our fiscal situation, we need to step back and, and focus on what we can actually accomplish by partnerships instead of not do, and, and not simply by doing it ourselves. Personally, I'd like to see a liaison or coordinator for sustainability under the city manager because it cuts beyond Public Works. It touches housing and community development. Everything that we do in the city has implications in terms of greenhouse gases, energy and our natural environment, all of those things. So I would like to see, uh, this, uh, budget cut. I'd like to see a sustainability coordinator or suppe- suppo- sustainability liaison stay, um, in place to, to be able to access these other resources available that, from organizations and entities that are more flush than we are.
Councilmember Gibson, you said the budget cut. Are you proposing a, and, as a dollar amount that is different?
Yeah, let's cut a hundred thousand from that one.
Okay, so-
So this is of the, of the three eighty-five? You want to reduce it to two eighty-five? And move it to the city manager's office?
Yes, I, I didn't know I could. Yeah, I would, uh, like to do that.
Okay.
I would, I would, just to, just to, to share my thoughts on that, I, I do not think that that position belongs in the city manager's office at all. Um, there's, there's no relationship to what the city manager's office does in terms of sustainability, um, at least as it's currently defined. So we would really need some clarity on the changing of approach and policy from council in order for that to make sense.
Understood. Um, I think that it would be, it, it, I, I, it is a different, I'm not talking about just moving it over at, in whole cloth. It, it would be a change of focus, uh, somewhat, and it needs to be articulated. I understand that. And our permanent, when we get a permanent city manager, maybe he or she will, will find that, that, that it would fit if we articulate it well.
So I do want to remind my colleagues that the council right now, the task before us is the budget. If the council additionally, we set policy, we don't necessarily dictate how that policy is implemented. So I think it is important for us to make sure that we're accounting for Councilmember Gibson's proposed one hundred thousand dollar decrease. If there is a discussion regarding, um, placement or the roles and functions of the Sustainability Department, that is something that should be discussed at a, at a different time, perhaps when we are talking about ways to address our sustainability goals and priorities that have been communicated. Um, I want to, uh, move on to Councilmember Dibala.
Yeah, just briefly, um, I would, uh, ask that people, um, take another look at the framework. Um, because the first goal, the first piece, the, uh, the first, um, resolved says what the overall goal is. And the second, third and fourth are coordination with the county, coordination with the state and ev- and lobbying with the state and partnerships. So if, if a person in a position has emphasized one thing instead of another, the framework itself, in my view, already lays out that coordination and that partnership. Just putting that out there. Um, so I would appreciate it if people would take a look at some of this stuff and if there are specific questions about, uh, the, the accomplishments or the specific projects of the program, maybe we could ask the, um, Director of Public Works to just send, send some of that stuff around again that had been presented in, what was it, January?
We shared that today.
We, we shared that today already? Okay, so then if people can take a look at that. Um, and then, and again, if, if, if there is a, an interest in changing housing policy, economic development policy, does it tree policy, um, climate policy of the previous council? Great. Let's find a place to do it. But if we don't have the money budgeted to work on the issue, we don't have anybody to even give us the options.
Uh, Councilmember Fulcher?
Um, I was gonna suggest something very similar to what Councilman Gibson suggested. Um, I, I think that a hundred thousand, uh, is more than just cutting into the salary though. I think that's also cutting into the programming. Um, I was gonna suggest if you're going from a manag- a, a, a director, manag- a manager position to a coordinator position, that the, the decrease would be closer to sixty thousand, not a hundred thousand. Uh, but we can also discuss that later.
And just to clarify, that hundred thousand was not assumed a per, a salary cut. That was programmatic cut. It was taking out of the, the current, uh, contracts amount. So it wasn't a, reflecting a change in, in person's salary.
Okay, then my suggestion is to make it a, a coordinator position and, uh, that I'm assuming that that would be about a sixty thousand dollar cut in salary and benefits.
I guess I hadn't specified, uh, what part of it. My assumption was that, yes, the salary would be cut and perhaps some of the contracts, not because we don't want to do those contracts, but because of our fiscal situation that we're in. So taking it out of both.
I would say that in order to get a better sense on salary, we would need, uh, HR folks to evaluate that.
Mine is definitely an estimate.
And in, in order to do that, we would need to have clarity about the level of responsibility and position. Currently, we're looking for someone that has extensive experience, um, master's degree level, uh, background. So if we're going to be looking at, at some, some other skill set, we would need to identify that. And I would, I would caution, uh, of reducing the salary because if you're gonna get a qualified person, they're going to have to be, especially if they're coordinating with county and, and other jurisdictions and getting grants, they're going to have to be very well-informed, very knowledgeable and deeply experienced. So if you're getting somebody who's a, a coordinator green, they're not gonna be able to make much headway in, in this field.
Okay, so, um, just want to remind, um, our colleagues that, um, the vacancy savings list included the Sustainability Manager salary. I do want to remind, um, our, um-
That, that got deleted.
Yeah, you put that back.
Yeah, we moved that off.
Okay. Um, so I- Yeah, salary and program. Um, but I, I do just want to, um, remind our colleagues that, you know, we, we lost our Sustainability Manager for a higher paying job.
Um, I mean, I- I understand what Daryl's saying, that a person that we would be hiring for less money would have fewer qualifications that we would be changing and that is, that is part of my recommendation.
I would appreciate, um, of, well, getting, getting the words right on the table on line forty-seven, but also, um, to get us, uh, um, what am I trying to say here? Uh, from the staff, uh, from the, from the acting city manager. Um, so if there's a person who's not at a program manager level and is not self-sufficient in terms of managed, being supervised, how does a person at a di- who supervises a person at a lower level and what workload does that add to them? If that's a question. And, and I, again, on line forty-seven, I think I heard Councilmember Gibbs, Gibson say that that was a program and salary reduction.
Yeah, and, and I would be open to talking with HR about wh- where the appropriate salary would be, um.
We would have to have a, a skill set and an expecta- we'd have to have basically a job, job description figured out before HR could, could identify the salary.
Right, and maybe if there, you probably got some positions that do, I guess, uh, well, we'll need to talk with HR. It, I may not, we may not be able to, to finally pin everything down, but there are types of positions that may be within our staff structure that would be equivalent and I'm not, not sure what that is.
And I, I would like to echo, uh, Councilmember Dibala's comment, which is when we have these offices like our Urban Forest Manager, like our City Engineer, like our Sustainability Manager, they are one-person offices. They are self-directed. They are highly knowledgeable. We don't do a lot of oversight, uh, development, education, coordination. That person comes in the door fully, fully functional. So if we're gonna get a less qualified person, that has enormous impact on supervision and program development.
Well, if, 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 I mean, we've, per your, your experience, then, then probably most of the, um, I, I would consider, I would like to consider somewhat, so, some, some salary reduction, but it sounds like it, most of these savings is to reduce the, the, the grant, the, the, the pro- the program area.
The grants that we make available.
And to be able to bring in, um, uh, any, yeah, so that's flexible.
Yeah, and, and that field is also incredibly competitive right now. So to find a qualified person, even at a lesser level, we are, we are competing directly with jurisdictions all across the country.
Can, can I also propose, because I am very hesitant about, um, proposing, um, cuts at a salary level, which basically means you're not able to hire anyone. Um, if, if the numbers in the vacancy list is correct, um, a sixty thousand dollar cut would take that position down to a fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand dollar position, which-
I'm sorry, I was including the fringe benefits in the sixty thousand. Right? Because it's a hundred thirteen thousand plus fifty-five thousand of fringe benefits for the Sustainability Manager.
Uh-
Then what, then what you split?
Yeah.
I'm assuming it's like a sixty-five thousand dollar position and like a thirty-eight thousand dollar fringe.
So it's equivalent to the Economic Development Specialist position?
Yeah, or the Licensing Specialist or the, yeah, like one of those sort of levels.
Okay, so that would mean that, um, that position totals, total with fringe would be about still over a hundred? Yeah.
Yeah, currently, uh, it's salaried at one thirteen-five with a fringe of fifty-five-five.
That's at the top. In fact, that might even be over the range that's being advertised though. Is that right?
Okay.
Correct. That's correct. For FY twenty-four, um, we budgeted at a higher rate, um, obviously to attract candidates in that, that pool.
Okay, okay, so-
It's, it's budgeted lower for this year.
FY twenty-three, yeah.
FY twenty-three.
The one, the one appropriate candidate we did find in our first round of interviews, we were not able to meet their salary request.
Okay, so, um, can I also just, uh, propose as an alternative, um, to re-add, um, the Sustainability Manager position to the six-month hold, which would allow time for council to, um, talk through some of, uh, these other, um, matters regarding the Sustainability Department, but would still allow us, if we reached a conclusion, that we need someone at the, at a higher tier, um, salary level, um, to be able to do that. But that would give us some time and still would- But that would give us some time and still would allow us to realize at least some short-term savings, um, within the, the current budget.
Well, I want, may I make a comment on that? I want to comment on the delay, is that we are already missing deadlines for federal infrastructure grant, um, applications, because we haven't got anybody to work on them.
And the county is going to be rolling out their electrification and energy efficiency programs, of which we would do heavy outreach, um, to get our residents lined up.
Which the city's a partner, yeah, good point.
Councilmember Hansak?
I think, I think, uh, I think you were first.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
No, we both had our, both had our lights on.
Councilmember.
Okay, sorry.
Well, I have this to say then. Um, I, I think that it, it seems more plausible to me to hold, um, a space for the position, however it is going to be held, um, than it does to continue the, the grant awards. But I do understand that this is one of those issues that people think is important to both the world and to Tacoma Park residents. My, my statement there is that, that it can't have been so important that we figured out how to work around the issue itself. Um, and there's some rigidity in the structures, uh, in the way we conceive of these jobs that I'm probably more confused about than the actual position itself. It would seem like that, 'cause to me, Daryl, just the expertise here would seem to be with you because you are, you've been in the position for a long time and, and those kinds of things. And so if we were to roll down a level with regard to that person or we hired a college, a person fresh out of college, uh, from University of Maryland or some other thing, as opposed to, um, hiring a quote-unquote professional at a, at a higher level, it would seem like we could absorb it. Just like it would seem like we would already be in a position to at least be conceiving about these grants outside of Cindy making the effort to put them together or otherwise. So I, I just, I don't, I'm not trying to cascade anybody in the workflows or any, I, I just don't... It would seem like we, we could absorb some of these concerns within the department. And I just don't, like, if there's a, there's a statement on that that you could give to me, like, written or something, I'd be happy to read it.
Okay, so Councilmember Small, are you proposing in any way to reduce the decrease that you have on the table? Are you, are you hoping to keep that as it is?
I am, um, as it stands now, I am more, um, willing to consider the Foulter position, but I'd really like to leave it there, um, currently.
Okay.
Um, just for the sake of, like, I, I can be moved, I just would like to be moved.
Okay, Councilmember Hansak?
I would like to add my name to the Foulter proposal and make just one quick comment, which is just, um, this is an area that I work in a lot. And one of the things, and I do defer also to your experience, and I don't want to see you adding to your workload in a supervisory capacity 'cause I can see that's a lot that concerns me. At the same time, I think perhaps if we advertised at a bachelor's level with even like one year of experience, I think we might be able to actually get somebody who's a real go-getter. We might not be able to keep them for more than one or two years, but I think it's something achievable. Um, there are a lot of people in that, in that middle-year time period who are super keen to work for a city like Tacoma Park with our reputation, who would be very eager, I think, to work for us and, yeah, maybe simultaneously get their master's degree. And that's the kind of energy, actually, that this position really needs, is a chaser, smart, quick cookie, who, who will, who will go after things. They might not be perfect in terms of their refined skill set, but I think that could actually do the job. And I, you know, again, that, that, that's, that's where I stand.
Councilmember Gibson?
Sorry.
I just want to say, I, I'm somewhat convinced that we, or, um, that we should not postpone this. I mean, per, per your suggestion, uh, waiting six, six months, I think we, we need to jump on it. And I like the idea, the direction that we're going to find, um, some lesser-level, um, position. I, I'll leave it, uh, where I have it. It, it's both program and salary, but it might, um, it, it, but it falls in line with, with, uh, Councilmember Foulter's recommendation to, to take down, take down the salary.
So, so you want to keep?
Keep, I just want to keep it.
Or do you want to have your, 'cause I'm, I'm trying to get us to the point where we have fewer votes, not more. So if you would like to align yourself with the sixty thousand, we can add you to that list?
That works.
Yeah, let's leave it, I guess, uh, leave it on a hundred thousand. I, I think that I may be talking about bringing it down to sixty and then forty for, for the program. So, so that it may, they may be very similar. I think we can take some cuts out of the program area, as well as reduce the salary just to what we were, what Kara was talking about, I think, and Jason.
Okay, so, uh, just want to check again, Councilmember Gibson, would you like to amend, align yourself with Councilmember Foulter's?
Put my name there also, yes.
Okay, and then in terms of the other forty thousand dollars, in terms of program, would you like to just have, instead of the hundred thousand dollars combined, um, note that as a forty thousand dollar in program reduction?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, right. Okay, uh, uh, Councilmember Gibson, are you done?
Uh, I, oh, I guess, I was going to say sixty plus forty, leaving a...
Yeah.
Isn't that...
Okay, yep, that's what you had.
These are separate votes?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, uh, so Councilmember Gibson, are you...
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, um, uh, Councilmember Small?
I, I, I don't know, I guess I'd just like to say that I am, uh, I am anticipating removing my number if the, uh, Foulter, Hansak, uh, Gibson proposal were to pass. So are we voting on these in order? Like, is forty-six gonna be before forty-eight theoretically?
Um, yes, theoretically, yep.
Okay, um, all right.
Okay, all right, Council, Councilmember DeBala?
That's all I wanted to say.
So I would, I would appreciate it, um, I think I said this, but let me just repeat that we get, uh, from staff a sense of how this would work, how the supervision would work, what the salary would look like, how that compares to other positions like the economic specialist, what, what wouldn't get done if the position had got downgraded, knowing you can't analyze all of that in forty-eight hours. But some sense of what the practical implications would be of doing this. And I will, um, with, uh, perhaps with Councilmember Hansak's help, um, I can check with some of the local nonprofits around here who hire similar eager beavers right out of college and see what they pay because my sense is it might be more than we think.
Councilmember DeBala, I think it would be helpful if we could get some clarity from council about your expectations for the new role. I understand that we want to downgrade it and, and we're looking for a new type of candidate. It's not clear to me, and I don't know if it's any clearer to Director Braithwaite, what it is that we'd be seeking from this person? What, what change in policy and direction from our sustainability programming are we seeking as a result of this downgrade?
Well, I wouldn't be the person to ask, 'cause I don't think it's a good idea.
I, I do think that it is, um, for council members in particular, who led the priority effort around the, um, uh, environmental sustainability aspects, I would encourage all of you to take a look at all of those priorities and goals and the different activities that you've noted, with an eye for, do you believe a recent college grad, particularly a bachelor's level or a master's level recent college grad would be able to lead all of that work? And with support from our, 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 you know, our DP, you know, our Director of Public Works. But, you know, that is something that is, um, I think is a very good tale of what your expectations are in terms of this staff person's work plan.
I think there's also an assumption, and it's an obvious assumption, um, that the other responsibilities that were, in the absence of understanding with the policy changes, um, that there's a, an assumption that Director Braithwaite can, can simply absorb additional responsibilities here. And I think that's an outsized assumption.
That's what I meant by...
Because I, I think it would be a big ask for Director Braithwaite to, to, to take on that responsibility. Um, so I, I just don't want to, I don't want anyone to just assume that that is a possibility.
I'd just like to say explicitly, that was not my assumption at all. Like, I'm not assuming that, that, like, we're just gonna give, uh, Daryl more work to do, per se. Um, I, I guess my thought is that there has to be some, um, nexus of Gen Z-ish zealotry on the fact that they are gonna inherit a dying planet and somewhere in between the two is the magic thing. That's my assertion.
We will need to change the expectation for what the position is going to do. And anybody who's been in any of our public meetings where we are former sustainability manager knows, knows that you cannot speak to this community without a deep amount of knowledge, experience, uh, and you're gonna get challenged up one side and down the other. There's, it's a rare person that can be a single office and run a program and do all the things that we expect that person to do. That is not an, an out-of-college person. That is not an entry-level go-getter. They need support and, and structure around them. What we're looking for is somebody who can stand on their own, run the programs, negotiate on the city's behalf, speak to our residents, speak to electeds, speak to granters. That, that's a highly-trained, very-experienced person.
Thank you.
I would say that I would like for my, um, forty-eight then to be, um, everything except the alleged FTE as stand. So that, so that another one of these potential proposals would be to have the FTE in sustainability, but none of the rest of it.
Okay, so you're, you're proposing to eliminate, um, the grants and contracts component of the sustainability budget, but keep the FTE?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to associate myself with that. That's kind of where I was going in, in...
So that's, that's a deletion of a hundred and eighty from the three hundred and, what was it, sixty-five?
Yep.
Three hundred and fifty-two minus a hundred and eighty?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think I, 'cause, and that's the salary plus fringe for that person.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, all right, that would be what I would like to assert as another option.
Okay, so, just want to make sure, um, because it is eleven-thirty, um, where we are. Um, so we have not tackled sidewalks. Um, and so I want to, um, ask for, uh, uh, council members to kind of give me a hands-up on whether or not you want to keep going on sidewalks. That is the last area that we would need to tackle. Um, I would, or we just leave the, the sidewalk proposals that are on reconciliation as they stand. There would be limited to no discussion.
Um, numbers.
It's all in ARPA, it's gonna be down at the bottom.
That's what I thought. And all these are ARPA things, right?
Been adding as the conversation's gone on, so there's new ARPA stuff that got moved from general fund.
Okay.
Yep, so it would result, um, reductions in, um, any street rehab or sidewalks would impact our ARPA budget, but they would not in, impact our tax rate, per se. Um, unless there is a desire to move, um, or reallocate ARPA dollars to items that are currently in the, um, funded through the general fund. And so in those places where you've been able to identify those items, they've been identified. Councilmember Hansak?
Would we also be discussing the other ARPA items that are on here that I don't think we got to tonight? Like the bulletin boards or the...
I'm fully in favor of that.
I, I, I'm not going necessarily line-by-line for discussion tonight.
No, I know, I mean, on a different night, would we continue to discuss the other ARPA items?
We're voting, we're voting on Wednesday, yep.
I want to add my name to a hundred and nine.
Yep, so that's an item that we would vote on?
Yeah. And, um, my, I guess my assertion about the, um, about any of the street stuff is not so much the, um, the doing of it, it is, uh, whether or not we have, uh, focused our priorities properly. And my assertion would be that even with the spending that is in ARPA, um, I have no, uh, reticence about staff coming back to the council to propose a, uh, and a further reconciliation of the budget to move monies that are ARPA-funded into the budget for paying for things.
So, just so that everyone understands how the ARPA budget is going to work. Um, so this is somewhat of a separate budget, um, from the general fund. So what will happen is, um, as there are ARPA-related items that we may decide to re-obligate or determine, that would be a, a separate activity where we would go through. And we still have a number of items that are still items for, that are topics for discussion that were, that are in the ARPA budget. Um, and so that is something that we would discuss at a later time. I just want to make sure that I'm clear in terms of what the actual sidewalk, street rehab, and traffic calming amounts that we want to make sure are, are there because those ARPA dollars, um, would still be additional resources that we would have to re-obligate when we are at the point where we're discussing modifications or re-obligations of our ARPA budget.
And that's fine with me personally.
Okay, so, but I do need dollar amounts, so, or consensus on dollar amounts. So, um, if you have any questions, I know that it's late. If you have any questions about the potential impact of decreasing, um, street rehab by, um, proposed amounts, please, 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 um, chat with Director Braithwaite. Um, or if there are questions regarding, um, the impact of sidewalks or traffic calming cuts and what that may mean, um, please send your questions forward to, um, Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks so that we can, um, get all of your questions answered, um, prior to, um, Wednesday.
'Cause Wednesday, we're voting on this?
Wednesday, we are voting on all of the different items that are in now a shorter list of items for reconciliation in terms of which items we want to move forward.
Including ARPA?
Including some of these ARPA items.
Okay, didn't know that.
Yep. Because it has impact on the staff work.
Yeah, yes.
Is there any, is there, is there a, a question about the, uh, being able to, to, to use the ARPA funds, uh, to spend enough of the ARPA funds? I mean, I, I was wanting to preserve the, the reserves primarily by, uh, and, uh, but if, if we need to spend ARPA funds faster because we don't have any other places to spend them, then, then I might want to modify mine.
I, I think that we would need to, um, Director Eubanks, if it's possible for us to have an answer about, well, one, you will see, um, once this list has been cleaned up, you will see places where we are right now in terms of general fund expenditure reductions.
Yeah, right.
Um, also, um, Mr. Eubanks, um, I, I think I asked a similar question. If we wanted to, um, perhaps use or re-obligate some ARPA funds for, um, loss revenue, what are the rules and how that would hap, and what are some things that we may want to consider, um, for this budget? So that's something that could be helpful to discuss as well.
All right, thank you. And, um, Mayor...
Or to provide in a response to the...
Are, are, are we finished with any reconciliations items at all? Or, or, or is there room for anything else? Any new proposals, in other words?
So if, if, what would you like to add?
I'd like to add, I, I had asked a question, I didn't quite, uh, because I didn't get it back, but I was wanting, wanting to increase, um, stormwater fees to be able to, to fund a pilot stormwater project, uh, on the heels of, of our recent investment in, uh, LIDC. Um, I think we need to do something, and I'd like to, uh, I was wondering, so fifteen thousand dollars, somewhat arbitrary, uh, pilot multi-property, um, multi-property, uh, stormwater project as a demonstration of what we can or cannot do in the future.
And, and I did provide information, and you probably haven't gotten it yet. To generate an additional fifteen thousand, it would require a fifty-cent increase in our stormwater fee.
Fifty cents per...
Per five hundred square foot. So right now, it's twenty-five dollars per five hundred square foot, so it'd be twenty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, well, I don't think that's gonna kill anybody, uh...
No, but my comment is fifteen thousand dollars is... No, but my comment is $15,000 is nothing. I don't know what pilot program you would do with $15,000, particularly as it relates to multiple properties.
Okay.
It's a very, very tiny amount of money. I just, I didn't know if it was for outreach, or it certainly wouldn't be sufficient for doing any construction or any facility development or any rebates.
I mean, some of the conservation landscaping that I've seen has not been all that expensive, but can I modify it?
Sure.
Talk with you, can I talk with you about that? Just put it as a placeholder, put the 25, or 15, and I'll come back. But I would just like to explore going further from where we, the major investment that we made with LIDC with that to go forward with some pilot.
All right. Councilmember DeBala?
I'm not sure I remember. I had, I had wanted to, I had something, but I'm not sure I remember what it was.
I will email it in.
Okay.
And before everybody leaves, I just would like to say that I'll share the job description, going back just a minute to the other topic. I'll share the job description, because it lists, it lists things people do, and you could see what level of work is currently envisioned, and then you can think about what you think would, it would look like that was different. Would that be helpful?
Yep, I think it'll be helpful. All right, Councilmember Foulcher?
On page 194, Housing Community Development is asking to go, there was like 100% increase in their special events and programs, and so I'm recommending that instead of $45,000, we do $30,000. And so that's a $15,000 reduction.
$25,000 and 50 cents.
HCD, page 194.
Special events and programs. Let's see, special events and programs. So Mr. Eubanks, if you could provide, if we could have IRA provide us with information regarding what that entails. I know that for HCD, they do a lot of things like table sittings with the planners and things like that, that require costs. So if we could just get a better idea of what those particular items entail, and we can just put in a placeholder for the $10,000 reduction right now?
$15,000.
$15, okay.
Just real quickly, not to belabor things, I did see that request right before we started, and I do have some information I can provide you as follow-up here.
Thank you.
Did the public space funds get back, put back?
Public space, plan implementation. Yes.
I would like to put that back.
Back, yes, and I have that on my shortlist as well.
Did you all hear that?
Director Chung.
You're probably still working.
I'm so sorry. No, go ahead, finish, finish that one.
Decrease HCD special events.
Because we haven't been, we haven't finished.
And it would be, and it would be $15,000.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, no worries.
And one more zero.
Can we add the public space management plan back, meaning take it out, to the reconciliation list?
So currently line 72?
Yes.
Put it back in as a reduction?
Put it back in as a reduction.
So that's $30,000?
Right. Thirty...
Yeah, $30,000.
$30,000.
And let's, I guess you should change the name?
Yep, it would be myself and Councilmember DeBala.
Okay.
I think I got, I think I got everything else.
Could I?
Cersei and DeBala?
Could I just, sorry, I know it's so late, but I want to make sure this gets on everybody's mind and folks here. Councilmember Small, I'd like you to hear it, if you haven't walked out yet. I did have a conversation today with some staff that would make me think that perhaps we could consider something in the domain of the billboards that we would like to see, because it's really important to me, and I see that Small just added his name to that as well, Foulcher, that it could be part of the public space management. And therefore I wouldn't necessarily cut that line item, but I would like maybe some, I don't know if it's possible to get assurances or something, but some conversation later with those folks about the possibility of that, so that we know that we're not losing that possibility to have the billboards by assuming it would go into the public space.
Well, the billboards are funded separately through ARPA?
No, I know, so maybe, okay, actually, then you're right. I guess I need to say, public space management moved into ARPA as my modification, because that's 20K. That's the vote that I guess I'm suggesting. It could either be, sorry, I'm looking at my fellow councilmembers, we move 20K of the 30K for public space management into ARPA?
Because it's...
As a means of, but maybe it's just easier and cleaner just to do 30K. I would think, let's just do 30K into ARPA.
That's your proposal?
That's my proposal. Thank you if you can add it.
Okay. All right. So just, just so that folks understand, the, we're talking about the implementation of the public space management plan, which we have not seen yet.
And it may or may not include...
And it may or may not include recommendations regarding billboards. But we have the billboards there, and I did have the fortune at the pancake supper to talk to Boy Scouts that are looking for some projects, and I mentioned the billboards. So, all right. So with that, if I have a second, Councilmember DeBala, your light is still on.
Yeah, I'll just send an email to staff about this. I wanted to bring up one thing, but not now.
Okay. All right. And with that, we're going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all so much for being with me.